The public has been given the opportunity to address the board through public comment, either by submitting comments which are posted on our website or by speaking during the meeting. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting and submit a speaker form will be sent a link to participate. When it is your turn to provide comment, we will call on you to provide comment orally. Your video will not be on. Please always limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer comments until your item comes up.
Thank you, Board Member Zhang. That was great. We're going to now move ahead to item 4.3, Stellar Student Weston Kellogg. Is he online? And this will be presented by Board Member Wu. Weston is a first grade student from Martin Luther King K8 school. And again, introduced by Board Member Wu. It doesn't look like either one of them is online, so we can go ahead and come back to that item if necessary.
So I do see the Stellar Student online, but I'm trying to see Member Wu here. I'm not seeing him online yet.
Superintendent, would you like to introduce our Stellar Student?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
What an honor. And first of all, just on behalf of our team, apologies for having you stay a little bit longer for this recognition. But we, our Stellar Student Board Members, is a first grader. Weston Kellogg from MLK, which is one of our K8 schools. He was nominated by Ms. Jasmine Runfall, who said, "I'd like to nominate my student Weston Kellogg for Stellar Student." He's a first grader here at MLK. "We chose to highlight him because he's made so much progress as a student and as an individual." We met him last year when he was a kindergartner in our Learning Hub program, which you all remember during our school closures. He was very quiet, he cried often, didn't want to talk to the other students, and was very timid. Seeing him now in ACES, making friends, being an awesome classroom helper and an independent scholar, really makes us happy to see just how much he's progressed in over a year. We are very proud of Weston and everything he's accomplished so far this school year. And they say thank you to Weston Kellogg. And on behalf of our team, Weston and Weston's family, we want to congratulate you for this wonderful honor as a Stellar Student. I see that Member Wu has joined us as well. MLK is in his trustee area. But I'm hopeful that we will also get a chance to hear from Weston. Member Wu.
You're on mute, Member Wu.
Congratulations, Weston. I am thrilled that you are in our Stellar Student. You have made remarkable improvements. And hopefully, you are on the line, so we can hear from you.
Weston, go ahead if you want to say a few words. Or Mom? Are we having technical difficulties?
Hopefully, they're not muted somehow, Mr. Flores. Can you confirm?
I'm confirming they're not muted on our end.
Okay. Can you hear us, Weston?
Weston or Desiree?
We can come back, Vice President Garcia, if we're able to... Oh, hello? If we're able to get a hold of them.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Well, congratulations, Weston. What an accomplishment in moving from kindergarten to first grade and already owning your academic success. So congratulations. Very proud of you. And now we're going to move on to item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session. So Ann?
Good evening, Vice President Garcia. There are two announcements coming out of closed session this evening. The first is that the Board approved three special education settlement agreements, each related to three separate special education matters, each by a unanimous vote of 7-0. And the second announcement will come from Superintendent.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Collins. I just have one announcement that we're very excited about. And that is that by a unanimous vote, the Board this evening approved the appointment of Dr. Roxanne Wolf as Principal of Bret Hart Elementary School. Congratulations, Dr. Wolf. We're excited about you coming over to Bret Hart Elementary.
And Superintendent, so it looks like there have been some audio issues on their end. It looks like she unmuted. I don't know if you want to try one more time?
Absolutely. Let's try it. Hello?
Doesn't look like anything's coming through, unfortunately.
She did put on the chat. Thank you. Not sure what happened with the audio, so.
Yeah, sorry about that. Did you want to try one more time before we move on to the next agenda item? Okay, I see that. Going back to mute. So now we're moving on to Agenda Item 6. This is the Agenda Adoption, so if I can have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda.
Don't move.
Okay, so now, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any noes? Okay. So we're good to go. Thank you. Now we're moving on to Agenda Item Number 7. This is Public Comment, and if Ann or Vincent can tell me how many speakers we have for public comment, I have that we have 17 live comments. And let me know if that has changed.
We have two additional requests for public comment. Online right now, we do not have that number. We probably have about a dozen.
Okay, so with that in mind, I think we can allow for the standard time of two minutes for public comment tonight. And I also just wanted to make sure that we just reiterate a message that while the school board meetings are public and they're open, that as a board, we have an obligation not only to hear and act on numerous matters and to do so in an orderly and efficient manner. So, you know, we're guided by our bylaws that are consistent with laws, including the Brown Act. So we're not going to, you know, further limit your time because we do have to allocate the time for public input. So we're doing that at 15 minutes for this item. But also, the Board's ability to engage and immediately respond to comments. So we just have to be very careful, colleagues, in how we engage and respond to public comments. We're human beings. We hear the urgency of our community and the passion that they bring to public comment. But this unfortunately doesn't mean that we can engage directly. So we just want to make sure that that's clear. And again, this is all, you know, following Board bylaws, consistent with laws and Brown Act. So, but with that, we're going to go ahead and hear from our 19 speakers, 12 online. And looking forward to hearing your public comments at two minutes each. And I'll go ahead and start the timer, and I will politely ask you to please wrap it up so that we can keep the public comments going. So, and with that, we're going to go ahead and start with our first public commenter. And Ann, who is calling the names?
Yes, our first public comment is from Melissa Reynoso.
Melissa, go ahead. You're on mute, Melissa? You're still on mute, Melissa? Melissa, you're still on mute? Maybe we can come back to Melissa and we can go to our next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Damian Harmony.
Okay, Damian, go ahead.
All right, I've clicked the unmute button. Can you all hear me okay?
We can sure hear you. Thank you.
Terrific. I'm using time donated tonight by Kara Sinhurst as well.
Okay, so give me a sec. I'm going to reset you at four minutes.
Thank you much.
All right, go.
All right. "I come to you today for two reasons. First, I'm here to offer my expertise as a social science teacher for this district these last nearly two decades. It's clear that you've been misinformed and require extra supports in economics. However, as I just worked for free for four hours yesterday at bargaining, with your team of lawyers paid to do the same, I'm going to go ahead and email you my Venmo afterwards so you can pay me for the tutoring that you so clearly need. This is recorded, so if you don't need to put me down for your dinners to take notes, you just can make sure that you access it before the next closed-door section. In economics, when there's a shortage of workers, the commonly accepted solve for that is to raise the wages, improve the working conditions, and incentivize the job. This attracts more workers, allowing you to fill positions. And make no mistake, you have a shortage of workers right now. There's over 150 calls for substitutes on average every day that don't get filled. Further, there are students who have attended a school who've had neither a math or an English teacher all year. It's now February. You have also had a shortfall of substitutes, otherwise those calls would have been answered daily. Additionally, you have hundreds of students who are still on the waiting list for Cap City, which means that you're short even more teachers. There are students who have had no teacher all year. Again, it's February. The rest of this is for free, so no need to pay me, as it's merely advice based on the facts. Somehow, someone got into your ear and told you the opposite would work. You purged your sub-list last year so that you lost over 200 substitutes, exacerbating your problem. And your bargaining team is actively trying to reduce take-home pay of teachers. Myself, I could stand to lose $1,500 a month. There are plenty of people like me. During a teacher shortage, you are driving teachers away. You drove away Rob Green to Texas. You killed off our auto shop program at my school. You killed the last remaining Latin program in the district. And you continue to lay off teachers. Stop treating class maximums as goals and start treating them as guardrails that you should never approach. Help my students learn by shrinking class sizes. Help them socially distance with lower class sizes. You've even gone so far as to force school site councils to use discretionary funds to pay for teachers, further impoverishing the sites who are already facing staffing shortages. My site stands to lose eight teachers, a site administrator, a counselor, and classified staff member during a time where you have the money and there's a shortage of all of the above. I understand such austerity measures are necessary. I'm not saying that they aren't. But that's only true if you don't have the reserves to maintain normalcy for my students. That's only true if you're facing shortfalls of monies and have cut everywhere else possible. But y'all didn't do that. You have more than $100 million in reserves in case of emergency. This is an emergency. No time has ever fit that definition more. Other districts nearby have, at the urging of the state, that is actually giving them the money, spent their COVID monies on recruiting and retaining teachers by raising pay, reducing class sizes, and improving overall conditions to make the schools safe during a pandemic. Unless y'all have gone on a spending spree akin to the buying out of administrative vacations recently, I haven't seen you act very quickly to spend 140-plus million on doing any of those things. It shocks the conscience, present company excluded, of course, that you would hold on to all of this money during the greatest emergency and teacher shortage of our generation. My second request is that you immediately look into investing in solar power to take advantage of the sunny climate in Sacramento. Because so far, gaslighting is costing all of us more than we can bear.
Thank you, Mr. Harmony, for your comments, and we'll go ahead and go to the next speaker.
Actually, how much time do I have left?
Oh, you have 24 seconds. 23. Did you want to use them in silence?
Yes, please.
Okay, very good. Again, thank you so much for your comments.
Our next speaker is David Fisher, and he is combining time with Nikki Malewski, Cindy Stewart, and Melissa Reynoso.
So they're at eight minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
You're good to go. Thank you.
So I'd like to start my comments with just a couple glaring examples of districts' poor decision and the subsequent lack of accountability that has devastating effects on the teaching and learning in the district. Nikki Malewski also emailed all this information to the entire board earlier today. Since last May, we have been raising concerns regarding the district's leadership purging of over 200 teachers off the substitute teacher list before the school year even began. This eliminated over a third of our total substitute pool before school began, cutting off some teachers who have worked for decades in this district. This unprecedented and ill-conceived action by district leadership has undermined the district's ability to provide substitute teachers for classrooms and exacerbated this teacher crisis in our district. Even on the very first day of school this year, 28 classrooms were without a teacher at all. On the worst day so far, 149 classrooms had unfilled substitute requests. And those classes of students sat in auditoriums, were blended with other classrooms, or some other ad hoc situation where no real learning could occur. All because 200, over 200 substitutes were purged for no reason. Now, we have heard the district continue to say that they purged these substitute teachers by sending out the same old assurance letter that they used to send out every year. But just a quick read of the letters clearly shows that's entirely untrue. For example, the old letter sent out in 2020 states, quote, "If you do not hear back from you, we'll assume that you are willing to work with us for the upcoming school year," end quote. Fair enough, right? The letter you just sent out to the emails, by the way, which you'd never done before this last school year, says, quote, "Failure to respond to this notice by June 18, 2021 is you acknowledging that you are not returning for the 2122 school year." Clearly different. You can hear from that evidence, these two letters end with completely opposite requests and outcomes. Substitutes, even if they saw the district email, many of them ignored the letter because the district issues a letter to them every year just to make it hard to collect unemployment, but they have never had to respond to that letter before. When this came to our attention last year, we begged the district to not go ahead with it. But they proceeded and have taken no steps to correct the mistake. SAC City is not suffering from the same lack of substitutes due to the pandemic that other districts are experiencing. Our students are suffering an exasperated crisis due to the direct actions of leadership in this district that sent over 200 substitutes packing before the year even started. Since September, SCTA has proposed the following language, quote, "The district will make all efforts to reach out to prior substitute teachers who were removed from the substitute list in the summer of 2021, and upon request, immediately reinstate them to the substitute list," end quote. To date, the district bargaining team has rejected the language and has refused to reach out to these substitute teachers they had purged. Please direct the superintendent to correct this egregious purging of substitutes from the list and work with SCTA to recruit and retain teachers our students need and deserve. Another example of a lack of accountability in this district is that despite hundreds of students on the waiting list for independent study at Cap City, the district has not been posting any positions for weeks. It wasn't until we emailed the district leadership yesterday did any positions finally get posted last night. Where's the oversight and where's the accountability? And of course, continuing to make the staffing crisis worse is your irresponsible, illogical demand for huge cuts in teacher compensation during the worst teacher shortage in our generation, while gleefully giving the superintendent massive increases in compensation at the same time. In addition, we're hearing from sites right now. They're being told that the district is in the process, right now, of cutting teachers. You've got to be kidding me. Everyone knows there is no such thing as an extra teacher in this climate. Threatening to make cuts is driving newer teachers to look elsewhere as we speak. Meanwhile, what are other districts doing to mitigate the staffing crisis? According to a report released last week by the Learning Policy Institute, proactive districts are taking the following logical steps to address the immediate staffing crisis. Number one, increase compensation. Districts are improving teacher recruitment and retention by increasing direct compensation to teachers. Districts are offering wage increases, stipends, and bonuses. SAC City, in contrast, is demanding huge cuts in teacher take-home pay. Number two, investing in recruitment and hiring capacity. A majority of districts in this study are stepping up recruitment activities in response to known and anticipated shortages. SAC City, in contrast, is plagued by bureaucratic dysfunction and not even posting positions. Number three, adding staff to support students and teachers. Several districts in this study describe leveraging funds to improve working conditions with an eye towards teacher retention. Some districts are hiring additional staff to reduce pupil-to-teacher ratios. Districts are creating and filling additional positions for intervention and strategic and academic support, including counselors, psychologists, social workers, instructional coaches, and assistant principals. By supporting students' learning recovery and social and emotional well-being, districts are providing support for teachers. Together, these recommendations from the Learning Policy Institute reflect proposals that SCTA has made to the district to redress the staffing crisis. Proposals the district has consistently and without explanation rejected, while demanding unprecedented cuts in teacher's take-home pay, cuts that you as the board are on record as supporting. It's time to turn the ship around. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Our next speaker is Daniel Darby.
Okay, Mr. Darby, you have two minutes. Mr. Darby?
Hello?
Okay, great. Go ahead.
It pains me to have to speak to you this evening because this was supposed to be the year that we came back. Last year was such a loss, not only in terms of learning, but also emotional health and well-being of modern children. But yet, this year seems to be not a year of coming back, but of falling back further. I... I... I am now at a point where I always believed in the resilience of children to come back. But now, I'm fearful that we have a generation lost. And yet, I am in a district where that does not seem to matter. We could have done so much better this year if we had better planning. We seem to have people that, on the base of it, seem to actually care. But that seems to be missing in our district. So I will leave you with these words. Do better. As a community, we deserve it, and we demand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby. Ann, next speaker, please.
Yes, our next speaker is Ingrid Hutchins, and she is combining time with Hope Dennis.
Okay.
Actually, I'm... Hold on one second. I'm actually combining time with Vanessa Cudaback, Hope Dennis, Stacy Yang, Tim Ebert, and Erin Duarte.
So are we talking about 12 minutes now?
Yes.
Okay.
I promise I won't use every single minute.
That's okay. I just want to get the timing right. Go ahead, Mrs. Hutchins.
Thank you. Good evening. Like it or not, the pandemic has caused substantial changes to education. No amount of hiding our heads in the sand, nor trying to pretend that things are, quote, "normal", will change our new reality. The only thing any of us can do is move forward with thoughtfulness and intention. Last year, the district, with the blessing of the Board, did not adequately prepare for the school year. Yes, you wrote a resolution. Yes, you added some details. But the district's plans were made without consideration of the needs of over 1,000 students. You were asked multiple times over the course of last school year to start working on a virtual academy. Those requests were almost totally ignored. Only one person on the Board thought to add something about a virtual academy in the resolution you wrote, but even that fell short since it was a weak statement that we all knew the district could avoid altogether. Thanks to your unwillingness to require a virtual option for the families in our district, over 1,000 students started off the school year in limbo. The district, as you were warned, did nothing to prepare for these students until state law required it. At that point, they sloppily threw the project at one person, who left a few weeks later, only to drop it in the lap of yet another person. The district, true to form, ignored the teachers in SCTA who offered to help create a meaningful program that would work. Instead, the district handed the project over to a school whose principal was not forewarned and whose staff was not large enough to process and enroll such a large number of students. Due to the district's educational negligence, teachers couldn't be hired for the new classes that were needed until the school year started because the program didn't even exist before then. Thankfully, Mr. Amorine and the original staff at Capital City did an amazing job pivoting after the school year started. Over the course of many weeks, the staff grew and classes filled up as soon as teachers were placed. I'm not sure how many of you have ever worked in a K-12 setting, but that's not a small feat. Planning is the foundation of our work, and the district's haphazard plan didn't allow for the planning that our students deserve. As I speak to you tonight, we still have approximately 560 students who are on the original list waiting for placement. Let me make this clear: Those students haven't had any instruction this year. Packets are not instruction. Add to those students about 100 more who have joined the original list. That makes the total of about 690 students and growing, who want a virtual option this school year but haven't been given one. Not because we couldn't do it, but because you refused to require the district to create a program. You did not see the value in planning for it. These families didn't want the same thing you wanted, so you ignored the pressing need to make it happen. Now is the time to prevent that from occurring next year, yet I don't see anything on the agenda to address the needs of families who want an option. You need to do something because without a resolution, the district won't plan for a virtual option next year. They haven't even surveyed families yet. However, we have. After surveying the families who currently have students enrolled in one of Cap City's programs, 90% of our families want to return, with 85% wanting online learning. Those figures do not include the 690 students on our waitlist, nor any families throughout the rest of the district who might want to change. This means the district very reasonably have approximately 1,500 students wanting to attend Cap City next year, but no one is even acknowledging it. The students whose families want them to attend school online deserve the same things our other students in the district deserve. No student should have to go through another year like this one. That means we need to start planning now. Cap City needs proper staffing, including an RSP teacher, SDC teacher, and speech therapist. Our students with IEPs have educational rights that you cannot continue to ignore. With our current staffing crisis, the district will need to prevent more teachers from leaving this summer and start some heavy recruiting, which will never happen while they're peddling a mythical budget crisis and treating their employees like they're expendable. As a policymaking body that provides oversight for our district, you need to mandate that SAC City does what other districts in our state are doing. Make our district attractive to employees. That will require treating all employees like valued professionals. If you can give the superintendent a contract to make his position competitive, why aren't you doing the same for the people who actually work with students in this district? Now, since I'm using some of Erin Duarte's time that she so graciously gave me, I'd like to honor her by using my last few minutes to directly address the adult members on this board. You are elected officials, so the public expects to see that reflected in your behavior during meetings. If you're eating, texting, chatting, or rolling your eyes during public comments, you're not taking your role as seriously as the voters expect you to. What we see when those behaviors occur is a group of people who, rather than feel honored to be a trustee, feel that the public should somehow feel honored that they get to speak to you. No offense, but most people have other things they'd rather do tonight. However, they feel that saving public education in Sacramento is important enough to give up some of their precious time. You, as elected officials, should feel the same and behave as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Hutchins.
Our next speaker is Maria Rodriguez.
Okay. Ms. Rodriguez, you have two minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Vice President Garcia, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the school board. My name is Maria Rodriguez, and I am an advocate because I believe free and quality public education is the foundation of equity in our country. And I thank you all for serving this school district. My goal in speaking tonight, and I think I've signed up for four things, is to try to bring voices into your meeting which are not privileged enough to have a voice. Not everyone has time to put together a thoughtful one- to-two-minute response during their workday. Not everyone can afford six hours on a Thursday night or even have the internet bandwidth to keep up with the minute-to-minute board meetings. I sent an email to President Pritchett with some ideas I have about public comment, and Vice President... I sent an email to President Pritchett with some ideas I have about public comment, and Vice President Garcia, I appreciate your explanation at the beginning. When someone with a unique voice comes to you to speak, I would like to see them afforded some extra time. Um, I gave her three ideas. Anyone who's under 18 should get two minutes, no matter what. Anyone who's a first-time speaker should get two minutes, no matter what. And someone with a unique concern about their child should get two minutes. I don't know if that's feasible. But when people who know what they're doing, like the people who have come before me, come and they get to have 12 minutes when the teachers' union already has like a 12-minute time on the agenda to speak, and I know at least one recent one, they didn't even use their time. It is really frustrating. There is so more depth, so much more depth to what's going on in this district than what we hear at these meetings. Um, don't forget that, um, loud voices that make demands at these meetings are not necessarily the majority, especially those who have the luxury to threaten that they will leave this district. The people who don't have any choice with where they go to school, they're not here speaking their voices. And I pray with all my might that tonight I speak valiantly on their behalf and don't do them a disservice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Hanneman.
Ms. Hanneman?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you when we're setting the timer at two minutes.
Um, Jerry Snow donated his time to me.
Okay, so we'll give you four minutes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Good evening. In the 20 years I've been at Parkway, many superintendents and board members have come and gone, but our students have always been underserved and seemingly forgotten about. Mahatma Gandhi said, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." While you pat each other on the back about how hard you are working, this is the lens by which I judge all of you. You should be judged by how you are treating and supporting your most vulnerable students in schools. Parkway is a wonderfully diverse campus. We represent different backgrounds and we value relationships. If you walk through our classrooms, you will see students engaging in number talks, community circles, SIPs, PBIS, restorative circles, and rigorous math, ELA, and science lessons. Today, you would have also seen that we had nine classroom vacancies, eight of which were filled with subs. My admin taught the class that wasn't picked up. As you can imagine, there is a that uh that is a bit of chaos that comes with having that many subs at once. But thankfully, no classes had to be split up. Like many campuses, you will also see students who are struggling socially emotionally, having difficulty regulating their emotions, and struggling with the trauma this pandemic has brought their families. You would also see these students shuffled around to different classrooms because their teacher is out sick and there wasn't a sub to pick up the job. I know the district is all about data, so here's some to digest. 17% of our students are ELLs, 95% are unduplicated, and 100% qualify for free lunch. We have a dedicated staff, most of whom have worked at Parkway for five, 10, or 20-plus years. This really speaks to the dedication we have for our students. At my site, 67 students and staff have tested positive for COVID since we returned from winter break. I have had at least eight students test positive just since we returned from break. On top of the challenges that come from living in an underserved area with high transmission rates, our students and staff have been disproportionately affected by the staffing crisis. We average three vacancies a day that are not getting picked up. That means that both of my administrators are continuing to teach almost daily, which also means they are often not able to do their actual jobs. The classes that are not covered get split up and shuffled around to other classrooms where they are basically being housed and babysat for the day. Can you imagine being a kid, having your teacher out sick, and then being forced to sit in a random class for the day? And for multiple days at a time to due to teachers being out with COVID or quarantining? How are you using CARES funds to support our students, particularly the most vulnerable ones like our Parkway kiddos? How are you using those funds for interventions, for social emotional support? What exactly are you doing to recruit and retain staff? And to the board members who continue to roll your eyes, turn off your camera, interrupt the speakers, and check your social media while your staff and families are sharing their experiences and frustrations, know that you are ultimately hurting our students. Your negligence is shocking. Do you really want to recruit and retain the best staff for our kiddos? Then act like it.
Thank you, Ms. Hanneman, for your comments.
Our next, yes, our next speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Kashmir, you have two minutes.
Hi, um, Mo Kashmiri for, um, I just wanted to say, you know, our school, I want to say, start with some gratitude. Uh, I do feel like in the SEIU negotiations, uh, we're starting, the classified negotiations, we're starting to see a turnaround and then hopefully from a combatant, and we're hoping to change uh, this combative relationship into one that's more collaborative. Um, the bad, and so I do thank the board for, it seems like we're at least starting to make small changes in that direction, and that's something. Um, you know, but the big picture is still that our schools are falling apart. We don't have enough bus drivers. We don't have enough subs. We don't have enough teachers. We don't have enough support staff. And it's impacting everyone around the around. Um, my son, you know, regularly gets sent to another classroom where he's split up into like a different level of class, and he's not getting real education. He'll be okay. But lots of kids will don't have, don't have his privilege, won't. Um, and it's just sad to me. We we in bargaining asked for how many classified positions we have open right now. There's 252 classified positions open right now. That's like several schools full of staff that are just missing. Like clearly, we need to start treating them with respect. We need to recruit and to recruit and retain them. We need to pay them what they're worth. Like, be working with this district for 20 years, you should not be making under $20 an hour still in this city. Like, it's ridiculous. Um, many of our folks are, you know, if it wasn't for the minimum wage increase, would still not be making $15 an hour. Um, we need to, but at the same time, what makes me sad is that, uh, we found out today that in, uh, August of 2020, the district reported paying, um, Pam Manweller, the contractor negotiator, $56,000 from the coronavirus relief funds on August 19th, 2020. How is that an appropriate use of funds? These COVID dollars are for our kids.
Can you wrap up your comments, Mr. Kashmiri?
If more than ever, our kids need support right now, we're asking this board.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Our next speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Mr. Gladney, you have two minutes.
Good evening. Um, I want to start by honoring Black History Month by uplifting my sister. She's a graduate of University of California, Berkeley, mother of four beautiful children, my nieces and nephews, or my nieces and nephew. Um, she's a registered doula, midwife, and a registered nurse. Um, she's a labor and delivery nurse at Kaiser. Um, she's been through this pandemic as a frontline worker. So much so, um, she's seen so much trauma that she was at the point of nearly stepping away from her career, her, uh, professional environment because of the trauma that she saw. Um, you know, but but I'm going to uplift her voice right now because for the past few weeks, she's been at home quarantined with my nieces and nephews against the recommendation of our existing district protocols, as well as Kaiser protocols that told her it was okay with children, um, testing positive to return to work, with children testing positive in the home to send them back to school. So much so to that she called our district's protocols and processes literally a shit show. Now, she was to the point of literally throwing her hands up. Again, she returned to work in her professional environment to serve people on the front lines, but her professional observation is that the processes we're following are so much that she really was willing to just give up fighting our district. So while you guys give each other thumbs up to each other, to the superintendent for another raise, for ordering, outfitting insufficient masks, while you guys point the finger at labor partners, or staff, or teachers, or parents, or students, you know, like you guys are doing everything except getting your actual hands dirty and doing the heavy lifting that we're doing on the ground. I have plenty of gloves that I give to my youth scholars to do work in the summer for free to clean up our campuses and do the work that will endear them to the acts of service that will literally uplift them as serving adults. They're not lifting force to their mouths. They're not lifting their hands to high-five each other for
Mr. Gladney, please wrap it up.
Yeah, they're not lifting their their hands up to high-five each other for things that really don't have an impact. So I understand that you guys are listening, but with listening should also come action.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney, for your comments. Anne?
Yes, our final speaker is Melissa Reynoso.
Okay, Ms. Reynoso. And you're on mute? You're still on mute, Ms. Reynoso? Still on mute? Ms. Reynoso, you're still on mute? Mr. Flores, can you confirm if that, um, technical difficulty is on our end or not?
Um, if she could maybe try, she called her on the phone. Maybe if she can try hitting star six that she's there to unmute herself?
No? Okay, um. Okay, so, um, sorry about that. Um, uh, we'll go ahead and keep moving, um, to item number eight. And this is, um, the part of our agenda for special presentations, and we're starting with agenda item 8.1, Resolution Number 3247, Black History Month, February 2022, and this is by our very own, um, a board member, Rhodes.
Thank you, Vice President Garcia. Um, today, we're coming to you guys, uh, with a resolution for, uh, Black History Month. Um, and we're going to start it off, um. Whereas the first event to recognize and celebrate Black History Month occurred during the week in February, uh, 1926, encompassing the birth of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, two key figures in the history of African-Americans. And whereas in 1976, the week-long celebration was extended to the entire month of February. And whereas Thurgood Marshall, the first African-American U.S. Supreme Court member, stated, "In recognizing the humanity of our fellow beings, we pay ourselves the highest tribute." And whereas National Black History Month is a national tradition established in response to the inadequate and oftentimes biased depiction of black history and African-American communities in history books and school curriculum. And whereas African-Americans helped develop our nation in ways recognized, unrecognized, and unrecorded. And whereas the contributions of African-American citizens, scientists, inventors, educators, farmers, homemaker, elected officials, clergy, entertainers, athletes, and explorers of earth and sky have been recognized annually during National Black History Month. And whereas African-American citizens have participated and continue to in every American effort to secure, protect, and maintain the essence and substance of American democracy. And whereas National Black History Month is a vehicle for culturally relevant activities and scholarship at Sacramento Unified School District to focus on ways to close health and opportunity gaps for black students, employees, and families. And whereas, not only during the month of February, but throughout the remainder of this year, it is important that Sacramento Unified School District seeks to understand how to thoughtfully and holistically address African-American disparities in educational outcomes, degrees and certificate completion, and diversify hiring in order in order towards greater equity in the educational system and the larger community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education does hereby recognize the month of February as Black History Month and supports the important work and services provided by campus staff, managers, administrators, and residents throughout the district and across the nation. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education will encourage all staff and members of the community to recognize and celebrate National Black History Month through culturally relevant activities and programs. Thank you. Happy Black History Month.
Thank you very much, Board Member Rhodes. And, um, with that, we're going to, uh, move on to public comment.
Yes, we have two public comments. The first is from Ingrid Hutchins.
Very good. Um, Mrs. Hutchins, going to start you at two minutes.
Hi, and it's Ms. Hutchins, not Mr. Hutchins.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to ask the board, I I, you know, great resolution, and and we have these resolutions all the time, but, um, I want to know what exactly is going to happen from this resolution. I have been in this district for 20 years, and I am one of a handful of black educators you have. But I'd like to see you be able to recruit more. I'd like to see us have more programs for our students. I'd like to see public education survive in Sacramento, but I'm not seeing these things come from the board lately. What I am seeing is I'm seeing you upholding the superintendent. And while making that position something that other people might value, that is not supporting our students. So rather than just write resolutions, it's time for us to roll up our sleeves and actually get to work and improve our schools. Thank you.
Our next and final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Hey, Mr. Gladney, you're at two minutes.
Thank you. Um, whereas recent data that was shared in the LCAP PAC meeting, as well as other spaces, still reflected even in the virtual environment, African-American students were disproportionately suspended. Um, let me repeat that. In a virtual environment, African-American students were still disproportionately suspended. What are students suspended for in a virtual environment? Even in a virtual environment, African-American students are disproportionately suspended. In a district of 40,000 with 5,000 African-American students, they are suspended at the highest rate. Whereas in a virtual environment, African-American students were still in the safety of their own home and sanctum, in the safety of our so-called hubs. African-Americans were still disproportionately suspended higher than any other student population in our district. Whereas they are still disproportionately identified for special needs services. Whereas the school sites that they attend are disproportionately suffering from quarantines and exposures. And this learning loss we're trying to mitigate by keeping our schools open, they are disproportionately affected by our failure piss poor policies that you seven, including Board Member Pritchett, happy birthday, Mike, are uplifting on behalf of our superintendent. I typically don't speak to the help, but that's what he's supposed to be. You guys are supposed to be the ones running the show, and you guys are driven in a horse and carriage by a person who is supposed to be reporting to you. Whereas our students have generationally suffered at the hands of people like you who are walking up the steps to other offices in government for your own benefit, and our students continually suffer. Disregard this resolution and acknowledge the past and the current future that you guys are putting in place. That's the urgency that we need. I don't come to these meetings to speak on my own students because I lift them up. They stand on my shoulders. I'm speaking for the students I have seen that have higher potential than so many more of their peers, but get oppressed and stomped on by this system that you guys continue to implement.
Mr. Gladney, please wrap it up.
It's done. It's generationally, generationally done, and it's continuing on you guys' hands. When are you guys going to get your hands dirty enough to clean the slate for our students?
Please wrap it up. Thank you. All right, and with that, um, a- any more public comment, Anne? Ms. Moretti?
No, that was the final public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, with that, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have any discussion among, among, um, board members? Board Member Morowski? Board Member Morowski? Are you on mute?
Sorry, tough time getting off mute. I just really quickly wanted to thank you, Member Rhodes, for bringing this forward and just to acknowledge that so many failures of our nation just stem from our collective failure, our history of failure of recognizing the humanity of Black and African-American people from the beginning and through to today, and just reminds me that we are going through this reckoning on race and it, you know, sometimes it's uncomfortable, and I think we all need to be ready to get uncomfortable and to recognize, you know, like implicit bias, that that's, that means that we can't see it, right? We have to be ready to see it in ourselves. So just fully support this. Thank you for the recognition to our Black and African-American staff, students, families. And I do think when we talk about goals, fellow Board Members, that we need to lift up specific metrics around our Black and African-American students as a top priority, because this is one of the things we have to rectify and correct. So again, appreciate it. It's important to bring these things forward. And it's not that every resolution has an action attached to it, but it starts that conversation, and we can continue that conversation as we take further action. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Board Member Rhodes?
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Murawski. As we continue the work, I hope, and the work shall be done to further move forward these conversations. And I look forward to bringing more things to the community, more things to my colleagues as we look at equity, but with a social and racial justice lens to make sure that, you know, the system that was not built to impact positively the people that it must impact now, that we understand that system, that we are working towards changing that. And that's throughout our system, through our staffing, to our kids, especially our students, creating the disparities through areas and shifting that, but shifting that throughout the work and the policy that we do, and then holding the system accountable for that work and walking alongside community to do that. So I look forward to all that work, and I thank you guys for hearing the resolution.
Thank you, Board Member Rhodes. Board Member Phillips?
Okay, Black History Month, for one, it's the shortest month of the year, but that's for another discussion. I really have hesitation in resolutions that we've heard don't have action. The Great Reckoning is not going to occur until we start enforcing the policies that we have. If every year we're going to talk about, I know I sound like Terrence Gladney here because he said everything that I wanted to say, but we're not doing enough for our Black students. And I'm not even going to say Black and Brown. I'm going to say Black. If our numbers are high in suspensions, what are we actually doing about this? It seems to me like we crunch data, we put out a PowerPoint, it says this is our problem, and we don't do anything to fix it. I know that now we're in the middle of a pandemic. I'm going to say middle because we're not done, not even close, but we have to be more focused on specifically Black students because our district is not doing anything for them. And I would like to add, this is the second time that I have not had an opportunity to address a resolution with regard to Black History Month. So I'm going to put it on the table now. Next year, when Black people get one month, February 1st or February 28th, I would like to speak on it. Not sure why I'm not a part of that. But I think it is really important that we also make sure that we are being as fair as possible to our Board Members. So I have nothing else to say, but the Great Reckoning is not going to happen until we recognize that we have a race problem, that we are a racist district. Nothing is going to happen until we admit that we have a problem. It's the first step in AA. Thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Phillips. And can we make sure that for next year, Board Member Phillips has asked to be the person, the Board Member, bringing a resolution for Black History Month? And with that, any additional comments, Board Member Phillips? Your hand is still up. Okay. And with that, I think that there is certainly a lot of work that needs to happen to support our students, especially our African-American students. That is, that goes without saying. A lot of work is taking place, not enough, not fast enough, and we know that. So just want to make sure that we underscore the urgency that this work needs to happen. And there are so many other students that also have great needs, but I think it is a fact that our African-American students have the greatest need above all. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion. This is an action item. So I would like to entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Thank you, Board Member Rhodes, for the motion. And who seconded? Second? Oh, Board Member Murawski. So now we have a motion and any debate or discussion on the motion? No debate or discussion on the motion. So with that, student preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. And Superintendent, can you please roll call the vote?
Yes, absolutely. Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes?
Aye.
Member Murawski? Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
I will abstain.
Okay, are we ready to move on to the next item, Superintendent? Okay, thank you. So Item 8.2, now it's the update on mandatory COVID-19 vaccine for eligible non-exempt students and staff. This is Mr. Bob Lyons and Ms. Victoria Flores. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice President Pritchett, Superintendent, and members of the board. I'm Victoria Flores, your Director of Student Support and Health Services. And here with me tonight is our Chief Information Officer, Bob Lyons, as well as our Community Engagement Manager, Nikki Kengas. And we are here with a COVID-19 update. So this is a screenshot, a snapshot of the Sacramento County Public Health Dashboard that shows all of the positive cases in our county. So as you see here on the screen, and as many of us have experienced, the Omicron variant has spread widely in our Sacramento community, and it still is going. As someone said, we are still in the middle of the pandemic. A Book Board Member Phillips said that. Right now, when I took this screenshot this morning, we were at 110 cases per 100,000 residents. That's come down a little bit to 106, and the positivity rate for last week was 52.2%. So I did this screenshot on purpose to show us the Delta wave here in August that in comparison looks pretty small, but when we started school in September, we did have, you know, a number of positive cases, and we can see how that has shifted and changed in January. Next slide, please. This also gives us a different view of the last 30 days in our county by ZIP code. And so you can see here, this is a map of our district overlaid, and two of our ZIP codes are in that highest category of over 2,400 cases. So 95822, 95823, and then you can see about four, you know, of our other ZIP codes are in that second category. So our district has really been heavily impacted by this COVID variant. And what we see is this reflected in our district and in our schools. So next slide, please. And I will show you a snapshot of this reflection. So this is COVID cases and kind of the COVID impact in SAC City Unified for the last 30 days. And I'll walk you through each one. There's a lot to unpack on this slide. So on the left in the orange category here, this is the number of positive COVID cases that were physically present at school or work during the infectious period. So that's what you see reflected on that COVID dashboard. And so what I want to draw your attention to is you see we had 364 cases in that first week. And what that shows us is those take-home, at-home tests that we did, remember, we had about 500 that were positive before they ever came back to school or work. So that was a really effective strategy, and you'll hear later on, we're looking to duplicate that. And then as, you know, as we started testing, surveillance testing started kicking out, you can see our positivity numbers did go really high that third week, 1,749, and then down. Over on the green category here, this is the number of COVID tests we provided. So remember, we test staff, students, and all of your household members. And this really is our commitment to public health of our community, to help stop and track and trace those positive cases and stop the spread from anyone else. So we came back, we did 33,000 tests, that next week, 35,000 tests, the most that we've ever done. This is when you saw the line wrapped all the way around down Stockton, and you know, hours long. Our health aides, our COVID testers just really worked so hard, showed up every time they could when they were impacted by COVID, and we were able to, you know, really meet that moment. You can see now we're down about 27,000 tests, and this number might come down a little bit more. But remember, we continue to do weekly surveillance testing, so we'll stay likely somewhere up there in the 20,000s. This next blue column talks about the number of positive tests for just staff and students. So when we pull that data out, one of the things I want to show here is that some of this is duplicate. Because when you test positive, you have an opportunity to test again on day five. And if you test negative on day five, you can return on day six. Well, many people do continue to test positive on day five, so they'll show up in those numbers. But again, you see this downward trend, kind of a high, and then we're coming down. And then when we broke out in the gray here, our positivity rate for staff and students, you see that same trend, kind of peaking there at 5.5 and then going down. What I do want to call out is we are doing a lot of surveillance testing, as you can see, 35,000 tests. So we're testing everyone, whether you're healthy or symptomatic or exposed. So we expect to see this lower positivity rate. If we were just testing people who are symptomatic or exposed, like the county mostly does, our positivity rate would likely be a lot higher. So we're really heartened to see all of this data kind of align. And you can see that just like with the county, we're starting to see, you know, that drop off. So this is our overview of January. It's been a really difficult month for our community, our families, our loved ones, and we are very heartened to see this curve.
Vice President Garcia, if I can just interject very quickly, by no means intending, as has been mentioned, just to pat ourselves in the back, but I do want to just recognize this data set and the point that Ms. Flores just made right now. From a policy perspective, the position that we have taken, thanks to your support as a board, is that we see the commitment and the infrastructure that we have built to perform this many thousands of tests as a policy matter for us to try to keep our doors open, to continue to serve our students. We are not looking to test this many thousands of students and families and community members to close our schools, if you will. And I'm grateful to the staff that have really taken on this task. This is just an enormous task and service, I think, to our students, to our families, to our entire community here in Sacramento. And I do want to mention to our board, to our community, we did hear from the state that they are going to be issuing 100,000 more tests per month to SAC City Unified based on this commitment that we have made, what they have seen in terms of this commitment and the service that we are providing to our community. Even though we are seeing fewer tests being administered, this is, we're still talking tens of thousands of tests that are being administered. We had been ordering about 50,000 tests per week. And so you can see where an additional 100,000 tests that are going to be provided by the state really put us in a continued position to provide this service to our students, to our community, and to our staff.
Thank you. And next slide, and I'm going to turn it over to our Chief Information Officer, Bob Lyons.
Good evening, Superintendent Aguilar, members of the board. I'm Bob Lyons, Chief Information Officer for the district. This slide is a oh, this yeah, this slide is our student attendance rates for the last, over this past month, and it mirrors what we've seen in the previous slide that was shown with our with our positivity rate, everything else. You can see this, our attendance rate at the very beginning, right after break, was 81%, dropped down to 75%. And this past, last week, has back up to 85%, which is pretty close to normal. Our staff attendance rate reflect what we've seen on the student side. So it dropped down to the second week, 89%, and it's back up to, last week, up to 92%. So that's, we're seeing the same trend on the student and staff side. Our staff, our vaccination rate's a lot higher, so we're seeing the higher attendance rates there. Next slide, please. This slide is our screenshot of our student COVID vaccine dashboard for 12 and older students. It was updated this morning and published on the district website. Approximately 53% of the students 12 and older have reported full or partial vaccinations, and about 4% have filed for an exemption. Since the last board meeting on January 13th, vaccination rate for the 12 and older group has increased about 3%, with exemptions increasing about 1.2%. As a reminder, the vaccine dashboard defaults to the 12 and older age group. And it's, the date of the update is just above the reset button, and it's regularly updated. We try to update it daily, but it really depends on the load from the Health Department. And next slide, please. This slide is a screenshot of our testing status dashboard as of this morning for all students that attend school in person. And because of that, the student numbers do not reflect CAP City students. As a reminder, only unvaccinated students, about 64% of our student population, are required to test. As of this morning, it was 3,981 of our students have not yet returned their consent to test forms. This represents about 16% of the students that are required to test. Breaking the 4,000 student barriers, a good indicator of how hard our health services and communications teams are working to communicate with parents about the importance of testing to keep our schools safe and open. We're requesting parents to please submit their student forms and records, whether vaccinated, filing an exemption, or consenting to test. Next slide, please.
If you can stay there, Mr. Flores, back up. I just want to just interject very briefly, Board Members. As we indicated in our last board meeting, we were going to continue to kind of pivot and shift into this area of focus, which is that as we have seen vaccination rates just not increase at the rate that we would have wanted or would like to still see here in the near future, our focus has continued to shift into this area where our students are at least registering for regular testing. And so this is, just again, as Mr. Lyons, Chief Lyons, mentioned, a reflection of just the amazing work from our health aides and everyone else that has focused on this effort, that 4,000 number we're hoping to continue to see drop over the next few weeks so that we can continue to so that we can continue to engage and conduct surveillance testing. So wanted to make sure that our board knew that this is a dashboard that is in place now. It, it is a publicly facing dashboard and would encourage our community to see both dashboards, both the staff, I mean, the student vaccination dashboard that we just provided an overview, as well as this testing status dashboard.
Next slide, please. All right. This slide is our staff vaccination dashboard. It indicates vaccinated and unvaccinated staff and those filing for an exemption, exemption as of this morning. This dashboard includes both classified and certificated substitutes. So you'll see that, that staff on the green box in the upper left is 40, 49, 78. So it's, includes our couple of hundred, about 700 substitutes. About 85% of our staff have reported being partially or fully vaccinated, an increase of about 5% from the last board meeting. Approximately one, approximately 7% of staff have filed for an exemption, which is about a 1% increase from the last board meeting. About 380 staff, or 8% of the total, have not yet submitted vaccination information. Of the 380 staff that have not yet submitted their information, 178 are classified and certificated substitutes, representing about 47% of all staff without a submission. Next slide, please. This slide is a representative breakdown of our non-compliant staff. As you can see, 39 teachers have not yet submitted any information, along with 124 teacher substitutes and 54 classified subs. Staff have been working deal and generally to spread the word about the importance of staff submissions and have dramatically decreased non-compliance in the past few weeks. And as you can see on here, that nutrition services, all of their staff have turned in their, their vaccination forms and/or exemption forms. So next up is Nikki Kengas from our communications team. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Bob. And speaking of spreading the word, we need all of these staff members to stay with us, but we also need them to get vaccinated or register for testing. And so we're doing everything that we can to make sure that they're aware of the deadline to submit their vaccination status to the district. We've mailed the fourth letter to our non-compliant staff home with the updated timeline of February 28th. We are also providing supervisors with reporting on which of their staff members are not in compliance so that they can conduct in-person outreach with their direct reports. And we're also, as we communicate with our existing staff, actively doing everything that we can to recruit substitute teachers, all manners of positions through every communications tactic that we have at our disposal. Next slide, please. That said, we are also not taking our foot off the gas on trying to drive that vaccination requirement compliance with our community of students as well. So we, just one of the tactics that we've used is to create a video campaign with board members, local elected officials, as well as youth engagement teams to share the message on social media and help to drive vaccination and testing and awareness of the requirement. Next slide. In terms of outreach, centrally, we are working on more targeted and intensive outreach to our families. So we're really targeting this subgroup of students, as Bob mentioned, on our dashboard, that 3,900 or so students that are, have not reported full vaccination status to the district and also have not provided their consent to testing. So our outreach is including in-home mailers to drive testing registration that we've sent to homes of those students in multiple languages. We've also created new resources for our school sites to assist in these communication efforts. And we are going to be conducting some onsite middle and high school visits with high numbers of students that are not currently registered to test to help try to engage them to participate in surveillance testing as well. Next slide. Recently, we had a very large communications effort that was centered around our N95 and KF94 mask distribution. We were able to get enough masks for our SCUSD community to provide 20 to every staff member and five packs of the two different sizes of masks to all of our students pre-K through secondary students. We communicated widely, again, with every tool that we have at our disposal. And this particular effort did get a lot of news media coverage with positive sentiment showing that we were there providing these masks that are known to be more protective to our students and staff to keep our schools as safe as we can. Next slide. In addition, we are working on hopefully getting a really large order of another batch of these at-home testing kits that we were able to send home prior to winter break. So we've ordered 88,000 of these testing kits. This with supply chain issues and how highly demanded they are currently, especially with the federal government also providing tests at this time. We're not entirely sure what we're going to receive or whether our shipment may be delayed. But as soon as we have updates for the community, we will be sharing that. And we're also providing our school site leaders with a heads up that this is coming along. Our goal is really to try, if the timing of the shipment coincides as planned, that we will be able to provide these prior to the February three-day weekends that are upcoming, knowing that people may gather for Super Bowl, et cetera. We want to have our students, if possible, be testing on those Monday holidays prior to returning to school again. Next slide. I'll turn it back over to Victoria.
Thank you so much. So as we wrap up our next steps, of course, we're continuing to balance our response as this Omicron surge, you know, subsides. We're, we're ramping up, as you heard Nikki talk about, our outreach efforts around vaccination and testing. We always continue to consult with SAC County Public Health. They met with all of the school district health teams this morning. It's every other weekly meeting with them. We continue to focus, as you heard and you saw on our, our testing dashboard, on getting those registration rates up. And I can happily report, you know, we started surveillance testing at our high schools and we are seeing a lot of vaccine records coming forth. So we knew that that would happen and it's really heartening to see our, our students registering to test or, you know, pulling out that iPhone with that picture. We are actively targeting that outreach to that 3,981 students, kind of by name and need and, and you know, what support they have, they need. We will monitor our vaccination mandate impact on staffing. I mean, you saw that slide that Chief Lyons talked about, particularly as it impacts services to our students and our families. That's a real emphasis and focus for us. And of course, we will continue to monitor all that data we shared with you using that cyclist, cycle of continuous improvement to respond. And we will likely be here at the next board meeting on February 17th. And that's it from us.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. It's always great to hear an update. And now we're going to move on to public comment. Ms. Moretti, we have, I think, four public commenters signed up.
Yes, we do. And the first public comment is from Daniel Darby.
Very good. Mr. Darby. Mr. Darby, you have two minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Sure can. Go ahead.
Hello. Thank you. So at the last board meeting, if I remember the number correctly, I could be wrong. There were some 8,000 students that had not reported. And apparently between the last board meeting and this board meeting, we chose to give those students an opportunity to turn in their paperwork by February 28th instead of January 31st. And we seem to have made good headway. It seems that we were unwilling to sacrifice 8,000 students' education at the end of January. Come the end of February, how many students' education are we going to be willing to sacrifice? What's the magic number? Is it 1,000? Is it 500? Or do we just postpone this again? Unless you feel that getting a packet every week is considered an adequate education, which from my understanding is what your independent study entails. Here again, I ask you to do better. Community deserves it and we demand it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby, for your comment. And Ms. Moretti, do we have the next public commenter?
Yes, our next speaker is Jane Shanley, or excuse me, Jean Shanley.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Thank you. So why is SCUSD doubling down on these vax mandates and testing mandates and masking when these issues are losing in the courts? Surely you know these mandates are illegal. Why do you keep pressing for them? Does it have anything to do with money? How much federal money is SCUSD receiving in payments for imposing illegal mandates on kids? Surely you know that LAUSD and Piedmont School Districts withdrew their vax mandates because they were losing their lawsuits. So why is SCUSD plowing forward? It just doesn't make sense. I think you guys know that the law is not on your side. Regarding the masking, Nicole, I'm confused. I mean, do, are you not aware that the FDA does not recommend N95 masks for children? I'm not sure why SCUSD is passing those out. Children's Hospital Philadelphia is a nationally recognized health policy research center known as CHOP. They're located in Philadelphia, it's a very diverse city. They've recently issued policy guidance in January 2022, recommending that schools end this weekly asymptomatic testing for students and staff. They recommend if resources allow, you offer voluntary participation in testing for periods of high community transmission for those who are at high risk. But they certainly don't think it's necessary to mandate it regularly. The guidance recognizes the burden on schools who are overwhelmed with this contact tracing and testing. And so SCUSD and CDP.
You cut out.
Experts like CHOP, you have doubled down and you're making the children quarantine and test unnecessarily. I ask that you end these mandates. They're not justified in the science.
Thank you, Ms. Shanley, for your public comment. Ms. Moretti, do we have the next speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Maria Rodriguez.
Ms. Rodriguez, go ahead.
Good, good evening again. Yeah, I would like to, if you haven't noticed, on the vaccine dashboard, it's an interesting correlation when you're looking at the schools that have high vaccination rates versus those that have low rates and non-reported. It really correlates with, I think, the schools that are more challenged. Like the schools that you'll hear Rich Vaskas speak about are clearly the ones on the right side of that graph. And I just want to point that out if you haven't already noticed it. I also want to point out that this is really excellent data management. And having sat on the LCAP PAC Committee, I know that data is something we always ask for. And as much as we criticize the administration, Superintendent Aguilar is a person who I think is data-driven and wants to get this type of information. And I think that's a good thing. I also think that there also needs to be narrative behind the data and sometimes the data can be skewed. But I want to point out that's good. I also really want to commend Ms. Flores. She speaks so clearly. She speaks with a positive attitude. I don't know how she does it. She's always looks awesome as far as her presentation and she's, she's great. And my own opinion is if someone wanted to sabotage the public school system, they would have created a virus that caused a pandemic and changed rapidly from day to day. I don't know how any of you are holding it together. People are yelling at you from all sides and just kudos from me.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, for your comments. Ms. Moretti, do we have the next public speaker?
Yes, our next speaker is Sandra Halsted.
Ms. Halsted, you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, greetings Superintendent Board members and community. I am a parent of a 13-year-old child in the district and a former employee as of June 2021. I do not agree that the COVID-19 vaccination and testing mandate is in the best interest of our schoolchildren, nor any staff members who do not want their employer to make a health decision on their behalf. The Omicron variant has taught us that the current vaccinations available for COVID-19 do not stop the spread of COVID. Now that we know this, you can pivot and drop the mandates. I don't suggest stepping on the gas, as Nikki said, but instead step on the brakes. You can stop the discriminatory, nonsensical testing of the unvaccinated children and staff since vaccination, as we know, does not make a difference in community spread. With my last glance at the SCUSD COVID dashboard, there were still 8,400 or 43% of 12-year-olds and up whose vaccination statuses were unreported. The superintendent said in an interview that these families who have yet to report might be experiencing language or technology barriers which prevent them from doing so. I would like to put forth the fact that there are parents intentionally choosing not to register their children's vaccine statuses or to consent to surveillance testing. Many families do not believe it is the right of the school board members to make health decisions for their children, but do believe their children have a right to public education free of this mandate. Also, we have seen in Los Angeles, Piedmont and Oakland school districts that a vaccine mandate within this school year is not plausible. They were unable to enforce their mandates. I am not sure why you are supposing it could be done here in Sacramento, especially with the state of the CAP City Independent Study Program.
Ms. Halsted, can you please wrap it up?
Please use this at least as evidence to drop the mandates.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Ms. Moretti, do we have the next speaker?
Yes, our final speaker is Mo Kashmiri. But also, it looks like the stellar, stellar student is again available to come online.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and do that after Mr. Kashmiri's comments.
Hi, this is Mo Kashmiri, parent, parent of a student. And I'm also working as the SEIU Representative, representing classified staff. I do want to say, the earlier speaker, Maria Rodriguez, is absolutely right that Ms. Flores does do a great job. And I'm impressed at how she's able to maneuver us through this massive crisis. I'm grateful that the staff and the students are receiving N95s. I'm grateful to the state for providing those. I'm grateful to the district helping to get those out. I think those are critical with Omicron. And some of the board members, some of those previous speakers said that vaccines don't stop the, stop the virus. But it decreases the likelihood you're going to get it and the, how deeply you're going to get it, how severe it is. This isn't a joke. This affects our, our staff too. We are now, that I know of, up to, up to three staff, classified staff that I know of that have died of COVID. And one staff that is on long COVID and can no longer work. And in the next month or so is going to lose her health benefits while she has long COVID possibly. And we may be coming to this board asking for an extension for her. And so I, I understand it's a difficult thing. And I do understand that the vaccine is a risk, but it's not as risky as not getting vaccinated. The biggest risk is not getting vaccinated and you can spread it to staff, to students, to our community members. It has a real impact. And for those that don't want to do it, I challenge you to have a conversation with some of the families of those who died and ask them, you know, they'll say that they wish they had gotten vaccinated. And in retrospect, they will. So I think the board is doing a good job on this, on this protecting our, our staff and our students. And, but I want to also say, you know, we do have staff that are, are fully on board and we're grateful that we have an exemption process where they can get a medical or religious exemption if needed as well. And I do think the district is making some positive strides in negotiations with us around potentially providing COVID leave and potentially providing some other kinds of incentive base. So yeah, we're hopeful we can get there. I think, I think this is a difficult situation. There's no, no one answer that's going to make everybody happy, but.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri. Can you please wrap it up?
That was it.
Okay, thank you for your comments. And I think he was our final speaker. We're going to, I get, I think, take a pause to recognize our stellar student. Is, is the technology working now? Is, is the technology working now?
Yes, they're unmuted.
They are? Okay, so Weston? Weston? Okay, I see a hand raised.
Let us try to call him on the phone. Maybe we could, maybe it might be a little easier.
Rose, I see your hand is up. Is this on this item for stellar student?
Sorry about that, Vice President Garcia. I was trying to fix something. My apologies.
No problem. Okay, so whenever the connection is made, you can start speaking, Weston.
Hello.
Hi there, we can hear you. Maybe you can put your, yes, there we go. Go ahead.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Come here, baby. Come here, Weston. Um, I apologize for the technical difficulties earlier. I just, me and my husband really want to express gratitude. Oh, hey, Weston. You wanna? Say hello?
Hello.
Hi, Weston. Congratulations on your huge accomplishment.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did you, did you want to continue speaking, Desiree, Mom?
Yes, you know, me and my husband just really wanted to express gratitude to Ms. Jasmine for nominating Weston for stellar student. Just hearing her reasons why she chose Weston as stellar student just brought tears to my eyes. As you all heard, the hurdles Weston has overcome. I know his progress really started to excel since joining the Learning Hub last year. That was just really like just a blessing in disguise. When they opened it up, I just called at the right time. You know, like, it was a real struggle when schools shut down in twenty twenty, when it first, COVID's just started happening. Weston was non-verbal for the first three or four years and we had just gotten approved for speech therapy and occupational therapy. I'm sorry, I'm just emotional. We had just started our journey to getting the help we needed. And it was just a devastating loss when everything shut down. Not just for Weston, like our family and other families that rely on special services for their family members. And it's just, it's, I was really appreciative of her to, to do that for Weston and acknowledge, you know, his, his strides he's made. And I knew it wasn't for me taking that initial jump to, I need to put my kids in this because I, I, I was working. I couldn't be at home and I couldn't be on, you know, doing the school services with him. My husband didn't have the patience. It was very hard. And it was just a blessing in disguise and we love Jasmine, we love, all the aides, we're so grateful for them, we're so thankful. And, you know, I, I stand with these teachers, I stand with these aides, I stand with the programs and all the special services. And just hearing everyone else speak on it, you know, it really touches my soul. And at first I thought, you know, they were trying to acknowledge my other son that's a fourth grader. I, I didn't really even think, and I feel bad to say this, I didn't think, you know, like, I was like, I didn't think about Weston because, you know, he was so young and, you know, like, and to think it would, it would reach to this and the fact that it did and they, they did this for us. I just, I really didn't want to like get off this line, even though we were having technical difficulties because people like us should be heard and, and we're very grateful for all this.
Desiree, thank you so much for insisting on making public comment and sharing your experience and the academic experience of Weston. It was one of the first things that the district staff did was to mobilize, to spend those care dollars to set up these hubs and bring in the kids in person because we knew that kids thrive in person. So it is just absolutely wonderful to hear that the goal was achieved with Weston and that he is, he is on his way academically, you know, you know, transitioning from kinder to first grade, which is a big, a big transition for many of our youngest learners. So thank you so much for calling back and thank you so much for sharing this story.
I really want to say it, it wasn't just Weston that has helped. It was my other son, that's a fourth grader now, that, you know, I think he was a second grader at the time. He was struggling as well. And, you know, we started services for him too. And he is now like average or an above average. And it was, it's amazing that these programs were able to do for us and we're so thankful. And I really hope that they continue to get the funding and then the help and the services because it is, it was very life-changing for us. And we're so thankful for this. And thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You have filled our buckets tonight. So thank you for calling us back and sharing that incredible personal journey and the accomplishment of both of your children. So thank you so much for calling us back.
You're welcome.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you for reaching out for me too.
Yes.
So much.
Have a great night. Thank you.
You too.
So, and with that, I'm so glad she called back. I think we're all very glad that she called back. It is these types of stories that I know fill our buckets when we're doing this kind of work because it's not easy. But with that, we'll bring it back to the agenda item eight point two. At this point, we finalized our public comments. So we'll go ahead and open it up for board discussion. So we'll go ahead and open it up for board discussion. Any of my colleagues wanting to have any questions or comments for Ms. Flores and team? Go ahead, Board Member Murawski.
I'm not sure if I saw Board Member Phillips' hand. I think I saw her.
Okay, there's her. If she first, if I missed you, sorry, Board Member Phillips, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just wondering again, I know that I've asked this before from Ms. Flores. Are we going to have, if we're gonna distribute masks to students, are we going to have I, any training or ways to put them on, ways to keep them on, ways to be safe with them? Because N95 masks are, you know, very uncomfortable. You know, they serve their purpose by being uncomfortable. That's how they work. So I, I'm, I have a certain amount of hesitation in giving those to the littles because the chances are pretty good they're not gonna keep them on. I have not seen a KN94, so maybe I'll be stopping by the district office tomorrow to see that. But I, I just want to make sure that we're educating our students as to how they're supposed to use those masks, regardless of what grade they're in.
Yeah, I believe we do have some information that's gone out, you know, again, it's, I believe electronically. So we can definitely work with communications on just maybe a simple visual. I do know that K, I hope I get it right,KF94s are much more comfortable. They're a little bit more like the cloth mask, but, but they're not. They've got all those layers and they conform to little faces. So those N95s are more for the older children and adults. And I do have one of the blue ones. I know many of us have modified them. I'm not sure how, you know, because of the, you know, a lot of people don't like the straps that go in the back and those KN95s or KF94s have the ear straps. We really want to make mask-wearing as comfortable as we can for all of our staff, our students, our children, and really just provide those choices. They also have the option of the surgical mask, which is also a little bit more tolerated at all of our school sites as well. So it really is about that, you know, voice and choice. And of course, they can continue to wear any mask they bring from home as well.
Thank you, Victoria.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Board Member Phillips. Board Member Murawski?
Oh, thank you. Well, first just, again, I will take every opportunity to express my undying respect and gratitude for you, Victoria, and for your team and the work that you're doing. So I'm, I'm very, very glad to see the, the KF94s. I think it's a real equity issue. I've bought them for my sons and tried to send them in with, you know, the best mask I could find that they would tolerate. So I'm, I'm just really happy that we're doing that for all of our students. Just like, I, I guess I would just want to say on the, the issue of, you know, somebody making health decisions for other people, like we live in a society and we are all making health decisions for all of the people that we are around, you know, based on whether we have a disease that we can spread to them. So that's just what it is when you live in a society and we're making decisions to try to protect ourselves and our students and our staff from this virus. So it's, there's no, you know, easy or free options. And we're, we're in the middle of the pandemic and we're making the best decisions we can to protect ourselves. So just really appreciate also the, the, the support of our labor partners in, in this collective effort that we're, that we're undertaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Murawski. Any other comments, questions? Okay, so thank you, Ms. Flores, to you and your team. I know that you have been hard at work for, this is the third year of the pandemic, so it's, it's been a long time. And very pleased to know that because of the partnership between the district and the California Department of Public Health, the district often gets, you know, extra support sooner, especially with masks. And so even with tests, so it's just, I just want to make sure that we lifted that and you were a catalyst in making sure that that happens. So I just wanted to thank you. I'm also glad to see that we're getting additional tests. I was at Hiram Johnson just last week and I think they were getting ready for the surveillance testing. So I know there's more work to be done at Hiram in terms of getting more kids to get tested, you know, participate in the testing. And I think, you know, the, the, the data piece that we see in terms of where we're seeing the higher number of still unvaccinated, you know, eligible students. I mean, I, I have to reflect that we are also prioritizing those particular sites as vaccination sites. So it's just discouraging that we still haven't pierced through increasing those rates. Because, you know, we are seeing higher vaccination rates at other schools, but we are not hosting vaccination clinics at those schools. So, so I just don't know how to solve for that. But I think that we're gonna continue to try and bring and increase those vaccination rates and, and decrease the need for for testing at such a high pace. I do have one quick question and I think you may have answered this, but I just, I just wanted to make sure. Maybe it was Nicole who brought it up with the eighty-eight thousand tests in the queue. So one of the things that I think, you know, that came up in conversation during a couple of site visits that I made, as students are being sent home, and I think this may be, already be happening, when they test positive, they're being sent home with a kit or maybe, maybe even on Fridays being sent home with the kit so that they can test and upload before they show up on Monday, so that we're cutting down on the pressure at the school site for the need to, to test that Monday or, or, you know, to come back to school. So I don't know if you have an answer. I think I caught it, but I, I wasn't sure.
Yes, so yeah, these, these eighty-eight thousand that we've ordered are for all students, all staff, our contracted staff. Fabulous staff that open those learning hubs. Oh, my heart is still full. For everyone to use over those three-day weekends, we are working really closely with our purchasing department to also then have another kind of regular occurrence of, or regular purchasing of those at-home test kits to do exactly what you're talking about. If you come to one of our central testing centers or you're at school and you test positive, we're gonna get you that guidance and we'd love to be able to send them home with an at-home test kit so that they can test on day five and then potentially come back on day six. One, it's just really way more convenient. I'm a working parent. I get it. I work long hours now. But also you might not feel well, right? Or other family members, other household members, you know, also might not feel well. And so, yes, we can order those from the government. There's only four that come for your household, no matter how big your household is. This really is an equity issue for us. We know we have families that are larger and just trying to really do everything we can to reduce all those barriers that we know our families face. So we're, we're hopeful and we will keep you posted on what that looks like as we roll that out.
Thank you. It's always great to hear that. I feel like you're, you're thinking ahead and, and so we just need to make sure that, that we recognize that. So thank you again for the great presentation. And with that, this was an informational item, colleagues. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to item eight point three. And this is the independent audit report for the fiscal year and, for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And this is Ms. Rose Ramos.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Garcia, and good evening, Board Member Superintendent. I'm gonna turn over the presentation to one of the partners from Crowe, Jeff Jensen, who's gonna go over the audit just high level and just a couple of the things that did come up during the audit. And then time for, for questions. And of course, this is an informational item. And Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's my privilege to be here tonight to present the audit results for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And so we have a short slide deck here that we'll run through that I think covers the audit in a high level rather than going through all one hundred pages of the report. And, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. So just quickly, background on us as an accounting firm. We're the ninth largest accounting firm in the United States and been doing school district audits in California for a very long time, well over thirty years. And currently work with many of the large school districts that have a similar size and scope to the Sacramento City Unified Audit. And we are, one of the things that's most critical is that we assert that we are independent of the district every year to be your independent auditors. And so we provide you with that assurance as well. On the next slide, just a quick background on, on the folks that we have working on your audit. I serve as the engagement lead partner. This was my second year serving in that role. And so ultimately, I'm the one that signs the audit opinion at the end of the day and is responsible for my team. I do have a few other partners that look over my shoulder to make sure that we are covering all of the areas that are, are relevant and important to your audit. That's John and Brian. And then really the, the folks that really do the heavy lifting and get the work done is Elizabeth and Tori, and they're fantastic and are great, great pieces to the audit team for Sac City Unified. So as we look at what our job is as your auditors and how we go about the work that we do, our job is to express an opinion on the financial statements that are prepared by management. In addition, we also provide an opinion on federal and state compliance. As we go through our audit, we start with an understanding of risk related to the district as well as an understanding of your internal controls. And from that, we develop a risk-based audit approach that then we're able to perform certain tests of controls, tests of compliance, and ultimately tests of financial statement balances to provide our opinion to you at the end of the day. And so that's broken up into several different phases. We started way back in May with, with this work. And then the, really, the, the bulk of the work is done. Uh, and then the, really the, the bulk of the work is done around the October timeframe there. And it allows us to be here to present to you the audit report today. On the next slide, we have a new accounting standard that was, was required to be adopted for this year's audit report, and that's GASB eighty four on fiduciary accounting. And so essentially what, how this impacted your financial statements is the Associated Student Body Fund used to be presented as a fiduciary fund. And in the current year financial statements, you'll see that that is now presented as a special revenue fund. And that's consistent throughout the state of California as to how that is presented now. Uh, so as part of moving that over, we essentially have to restate your opening net position and the fund balance for aggregate remaining fund information by one point four million, which is essentially the ending balance from last year's report. So we're really just moving it from a different spot in the audit report. But it, it is a required adoption this year and the district followed the GASB requirements to be able to do that. On the next slide, we talk about corrected and uncorrected misstatements. And this year we did have one audit adjustment. And really it goes beyond the scope of your personnel and what they do on a daily basis with your financial statements. So, uh, in the current year, you did issue new bonds. And as part of that, you did earn a premium on those bonds. That premium should have been recognized in essentially as a increase to your, uh, equity in the current year. The Sacramento County Treasurer unfortunately booked that as unearned revenue instead as a liability essentially. And so we had to fix that as part of the current year audit. So again, this isn't a controlled deficiency by your staff, um, but it is something that was material to your financial statements that we had to get right. Secondly, on uncorrected misstatements, so these are smaller differences as we go through the audit. We track them to make sure they don't aggregate into a material number. And we didn't have any uncorrected misstatements to bring to the board's attention. On the next slide is other required communications that I'm required to share with you as your auditor. And that is that we had no difficulties in completing our work. Uh, management is extremely helpful as well as all the school site staff. Uh, we come across a lot of folks throughout the district there as part of completing compliance and the financial statement elements. And, uh, everyone just does a great job of being responsive to us. Uh, there's a lot of information that flows back and forth in order to satisfy us and our audit requirements. And so, uh, we're very appreciative of everybody's support. We're also not aware of any other consultations with other accountants or other, uh, significant or adverse items that we would have brought to your attention, uh, well before this meeting if we had any. So those are all good things to report. So looking in summary at your financial, at your opinions, there's actually three different opinions in your audit report. The first one is on your financial statements. And so in the current year, the district received an unmodified opinion, which is the type of opinion you want on your financial statements. It complies with all applicable accounting pronouncements. It is free of material misstatement. Uh, we did have one internal control comment or deficiency, uh, related to journal entry processing. And I will cover that in a, in a subsequent slide here. Uh, the next opinion is on federal compliance and you received an unmodified opinion this year regarding federal compliance. And this year, you know, is a bit unique in the sense that we had to look at your, uh, COVID-related federal dollars that were being expended this year. They were new large programs. And so those were programs that were audited this year and we did not have any compliance exceptions. And then lastly is a state compliance opinion. And this is another area where there were just huge changes this year in what was required from the state because of the way distance learning was being, uh, conducted. And, and so there were a lot of modifications to kind of what we usually do for state compliance. Uh, this year, the district did receive a qualified opinion regarding, uh, state compliance. And as you might recall, there's no materiality with the state as far as, uh, even a finding like we had this year regarding school accountability report cards, which doesn't actually have a fiscal impact to the district. We still are required to qualify our opinion because of the non-compliance. And again, uh, I will cover this comment on a, on a subsequent slide here. So next slide, please. So just some financial summary for you of where you stand at June thirtieth. Your total assets now are over a billion dollars. Uh, your net position is still negative at seven hundred and thirty-five million. And largely that's because of your net pension liability as well as your net O P E B liability. So those pension obligations with stirs and pirs and your O P E B liability, which is your post-employment healthcare obligations. Overall, though, the net change in your net position for the current year increased by ninety point two million dollars. And as you look at your general fund, the fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty twenty one was a hundred, just under a hundred and twenty-six million dollars. And that was a positive change of about thirty-two point nine million, uh, from the prior year. Next slide, please. Okay, so as far as the couple of comments that we had in the back of the report regarding findings, you know, both of these comments are not significant findings. Um, but they are items that we do feel belong in the report and, uh, and management has provided their follow-up of how they plan to address this. You know, the first one is a comment on, uh, journal entries and the segregation of duties. Uh, and just keeping a log or a track of who is actually performing journal entries and ensuring that someone independent from who prepared those journal entries is actually the, uh, documented. So we can see that those are two distinct processes between who prepares it and posts it and who reviews it. And so, uh, you know, the district does have a process, uh, to ensure that, uh, some segregation happens. And so they're continuing to work on, uh, strengthening the controls further to, uh, you know, completely eliminate this finding hopefully going forward. On the next slide, we have the comment regarding state compliance. And so in the current year, one of the compliance areas we're required to look at is the school accountability report card or the SARC. And at two of the sites that we tested, we found that the, uh, SARC did not agree with the underlying supporting documentation, which is your facility inspection tool. Uh, again, at the end of the day, there's no fiscal impact to this finding. And really, these are, I would characterize these as typos within these reports. So when we looked at the supporting documentation where something should have been rated fair, it was rated good. And another spot where it was rated good, it should have been rated fair. So we have a couple of things going, uh, in both directions there. And again, I would classify those more as a, a typo-type situation. But nonetheless, the district has provided us with the response that, and they will continue to work on the internal control process that oversees the publication and completion of those school accountability report cards to make sure that the supporting documentation does in fact agree to the final product, which is your school accountability report card. Next slide. And so just to wrap up my comments, again, financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. We have no federal findings. We have no, uh, significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control over the district. Uh, again, uh, management and your team are very supportive of the audit process and being transparent and providing us with any information that we need in order to fulfill our requests. And this report was filed on time this year. The deadline was January thirty first with the State Controller's Office. And so that occurred, uh, ahead of schedule. So, uh, I think overall, very good news to bring to the board's attention tonight regarding your audit. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, thank you so much, Mr. Jensen. Um, and at this, um, time, we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Ms. Moretti, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, there's no public comment on this item.
Okay, um, and with that, we'll bring it, um, to the board for, um, board discussion. Um, colleagues, any comments, questions on this item?
Oh, eh, excuse me, um, Vice President Garcia, we do have, um, Taylor Coyada has, um, a hand up.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take his public comment then.
Thank you. I actually, um, did, uh, list this as the item I wanted to comment on, so I'm pretty sure that should have come through. In any case, um, just wanted to provide some general comments here. I'm glad you saw my hand. So, um, in a former life, I was a auditor of school districts, among other things. Um, just wanted to kind of share some of my experience with how I'm reading this report. Um, first and foremost, wanted to follow up on what Mr. Jensen said when he explained what the audit says. Um, and that's essentially the audit opinion, which is that it says that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects, um, nothing more, nothing less, right? So when we're looking at this report, if there's something good in the financials, if there's something bad, all we know is that this is what it, what the district says is, is the state of the financials is accurate. It doesn't mean that things can't change. Something good can become bad based on decisions the district makes. Something that looks bad right now, like our liabilities, these are things we can tackle. Um, more importantly, though, we need to look at things that are longstanding issues, um, the emphasis of matter, the declining enrollment, um, the, uh, liabilities, right? There, we need to look at these to make sure that the financials are good going forward. Um, I just want to make sure that when the board is working with the district staff and looking at these numbers, that they understand the context of them. Um, and similarly, when you're directing this staff in negotiations with bargaining units, that you understand if something looks bad now, that doesn't mean you're constrained completely. Um, the other issue is, you know, especially with the emphasis of matter on the declining enrollment. A liability here depended, the, uh, assets we have now are not going to make a gigantic difference if we end up in a death spiral of declining enrollment, right? It doesn't matter how good we are doing. Um, we need to make sure we have our district in a solid financial position of getting the money for student revenue. Um, one final thing I'd just like to say is let's really make sure we keep an eye on, are we billing to the correct funds? Um, are we making use of all available resources, right? Is there a grant we can apply for? Um, I see that the general fund is paying for the Chromebooks. I, I'm assuming that that was all on the up and up. But, you know, did we have COVID funds pay for that?
Uh, Mr. Coyada, can you please wrap it up?
Thanks. Um, just one final thing is, you know, let's keep a close eye on our special ed budget and that fund because that's, you know, an ongoing concern. Thank you very much. And again, uh, thank you to Mr. Jensen, his team. I, I know this is difficult work.
Thank you so much, Mr. Coyada, for your public comment. Um, and, um, is that it, Ms. Moretti?
Maria, Maria Rodriguez has her hand up.
Okay, very good. Ms. Rodriguez, we'll go ahead and give you, um, two minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Moretti. Yeah, I did think I, um, tried to speak on this because I, um, love numbers and I love accounting. So this is always interesting to me. Um, I did want to point out on page four of the report where it showed enrollment. It made me really happy because usually the district shows a truncated version of this graph of, of enrollment and it makes the declining enrollment look much more volatile than it is. And this goes way back to when there were school closures. I argued so many times that they needed to show the full graph, not a truncated graph. So that made me very happy to see. Speaking of the fact that I've been here for many years, I do also want to give kudos to Ms. Ramos because one of my passions with accounting is to try to make it understandable to the people who are reading the reports. And I feel like she does an exceptional job of that, among other things. Um, and then last, I'm wondering if one of you could ask Mr. Jensen just to explain a little bit what it means that it said that there was a, the net position was negative. Um, that's just a question that I'm wondering about and I wonder if the public ones are just about it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rodriguez. Um, we'll go ahead and see if there's, um, another speaker, any more public comment?
No, no more public comment. That was the final speaker.
Well, thank you. Thank you, um, to you both for commenting on this, um, audit. Um, and with that, we're going, we're going to bring it back to, um, the board for discussion. Do I have any, um, do any board members have any comments, concerns, or questions for Mr. Jensen? I don't see any, so I'll go ahead and ask a few questions. Um, so it sounds like overall, um, we are in, in good shape, which is a good thing. And it sounds as though some of the recommended findings are, they're fixable. Um, so it, it, it doesn't, it shouldn't be something of great concern. I do have a, a couple of questions. Um, on page four, the enrollment ADA trend. I didn't, um, quite understand the yield. Can you explain the yield, um, in plain terms? Because I get that enrollment is going down, the ADA trend is going down. Um, but in particular, the yield completely spiked in twenty twenty, twenty-one, which was our distance learning year. So I'm just trying to figure out what does it mean in that, in that context.
So I think I'm going to allow Ms. Ramos to answer that question if she would there, since this is part of management's discussion analysis section of the report.
Yes, I can take that question. The yield, um, uh, Vice President Garcia is simply our ADA percentage of our enrollment. So for example, um, I can just pick one. You'll see that our, that we are, in our current year, our yield has gone down significantly. And we talked about this in, um, and we're going to mention this also in the upcoming budget update. On average, our, um, yield is about ninety-four percent, meaning we get attendance ninety-four percent of our enrollment. And this year, um, what we're starting to experience is that it's been declining. It's been down to about ninety percent. Um, so, and the reason for that spike there in that year, um, we have to remember also that we had, um, uh, the hold harmless that took effect as well as, um, there were some other factors in there. Um, I think Adrian's on the line. He is our expert on what happened in that year. But as far as the yields concerned, it's the percentage of attendance to our enrollment, if that makes sense.
It, it does because we also were calculating attendance differently during twenty twenty, twenty-one than we had in other years, right? Because of distance learning. So, um, I, I, I think from my understanding, it was easier to establish attendance under distance learning than we usually do in person. So I, I figured that's what the spike meant, um, but I just, I just didn't understand what the word yield, I mean, what it, what it meant for, uh, and the context of yield. So that's, that's okay. You don't need to get Adrian on the, on the call. And then my, um, I just have two, two, some more questions. And then I did have, um, another question on, uh, compensated absences because that's a five point three liability. So it just caught my attention since I, I don't know what that means. So I'm going to ask you again if you can just let us know what that means in plain English. Um, just because it's a big number, um, you know, um, and as far as the liability to the district's budget.
Yes, those are our vacation, um, accruals. So those are compensated, meaning that if an employee leaves and they're, they still have vacation on the books, they, they can cash those out when they leave. Um, we're, we, we're obligated to pay those out to them.
Okay, got it. So it's vacation time, unused vacation time.
Correct.
And then, um, okay, um, I won't ask a follow-up question on that. And then the other question that I have were the, um, O P E B, um, liabilities. It was a really big amount and then it came down. So if you can just help us understand, um, how that happened, because it was just, it like shrunk by a lot, by hundreds of millions of dollars. So I just, I just didn't know what we did, um, didn't do, or, um, how that, how that came to be. So that's my kind of question.
It's a very good question and, um, we'll pro- provide more information on that. But what's been happening over the last few years is that we have been sticking to our contribution and that's been helping, of course. Um, instead of reducing that contribution, we've been, you know, staying the course. And the more that we contribute and, or we meet our target contribution towards our annual liability, um, then we start to build our, um, our reserves in there or the amount. And then we're able to qualify, and I guess that's the word I can use, and I'll let Jeff, you know, chime in if I use the wrong word here, for the higher interest rates. There's different interest rates that's applied to, to the amount that you have in this account. There's like just the base rate and then there's, um, the market rate and this, this other trust rate. And the more you're contributing, the more you get to contribute, you get to, um, take advantage of the higher interest rate. And the more trend that you're showing that you are making your target contributions every year, then the more secure the trust feels about, you know, this organization is going to continue, uh, contributing at that rate. And so we're able to take advantage of the higher rate. So what happened with the district in these last few years is that we have been able to take advantage of that higher interest rate, which has really paid off nicely. So that has started to eat away a lot at, at that debt level. And then there was a change in one of the health benefits a couple of years ago in the retirees that also the, the, the premium cost did go down in that particular year. So we were able to take advantage of the savings. Um, and I can certainly provide that whole historical analysis because we've been asked this question before. So, but basically it's the district staying the course that's really been helping, um, to get that liability down.
Okay, well, um, it, it's great because I, it just noticed that it came down by a lot. So, um, so I knew we had, um, taken some action in prior years. Um, but it's, it's good to see that it's paying, um, off like by huge dividends. And I did want to come back to one last question because it just really did pique my interest in terms of some of the comments that were made, um, about the, the net. And, and this is going to be your language, um, uh, Mr. Jensen, what does that mean?
Right. So, so net position essentially is equity. If you're thinking of like a full, uh, like a for-profit company, right? You had, and in the old school days, if maybe you took a basic accounting class, it was assets equal liabilities plus equity. We've confused it now in the government world by adding these deferred inflows and outflows. I won't confuse you with that, but essentially that's your bottom line is what's in equity, right? And, and net position is on a full accrual basis, which is where we're accounting for all of your assets, including your capital assets, your structures, your buildings, all that kind of stuff, as well as your long-term liabilities versus on fund balances, much closer to like a cash basis of accounting where, uh, and really those are the mechanisms that really you measure the district's health on a daily basis. It's usually on fund balance, not on net position. So why is it negative? Because you have your net Because you have your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability are huge obligations to the district, right? And so those numbers alone drag your net position when they're factored in as your assets less your liabilities equals your equity become a very, make that number very negative. So your net pension liability was 510 million and your net OPEB liability is 317 million. So that's about 820 million just right there. And, and just those liabilities alone that you, and for all districts really throughout the state, that's a huge impact to their net position.
Okay, got it. So it's just two big liability items. So thank you. Thank you so much for explaining that and indulging our community with your answers. So I appreciate that. And I think with that, we're going to bring the discussion to a close and this is an informational item. So thank you both, Rose and Mr. Jensen, for the presentation on the independent audit. So thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we're going to move on to item 8.4. This is a trustee area redistricting and this is a full demographic presentation with map options. And this will be presented by Ken Reynolds, Mr. Reynolds. Go ahead.
Good evening. And tonight we are again presenting the trustee boundary adjustments to bring the boundaries back into compliance. And this information you've seen before, I think I do have one new slide at the end to help summarize all the various options available. And so again, as an introduction, we've drawn several maps that show how the population for each of the trustee areas can be balanced. And the, again, the newest maps that we presented last time were maps D and E. And they were just a slight modification to Plan A. And again, our summary will help better summarize all the available maps. And our next slide is just a reminder of the public input opportunities. In addition to public hearings that were held to get specific input, there's obviously opportunity for input at every meeting that we've been presenting. And there's been several comments here and there, a lot of questions. But as of this time, we've never received any new map suggestions. So really just everyone trying to get an understanding of the impacts of adjusting the trustee areas. And then next, we will show you the summaries of the maps. And so for each map, there are two pages. The first page zooms in to the areas that are being impacted. We have notes on the page that identify the adjustments from one area to another. Then on the right-hand side of the map, we identify the peak deviation, which represents the difference between the area with the largest population and that with the smallest population. And that percentage, if it's less than 10%, it is a valid map. The white lines on our boundaries here represent where your current trustee boundaries are. And so that helps you to identify in comparison to the colored areas, which identify the new map scenario. Then in addition to that map, the other map looks at the entire district area. So it's a little more zoomed out. And here we identify the location of all the schools throughout the district and have highlighted those in blue that are Title I schools. And they also have the red labels as compared to the black labels. And then we do have counts showing how many schools are in each trustee area and how many of those are Title I schools. Then on the next slide, we show Plan B. And the, a note I want to make is basically Area 3 is expanding just slightly and Area 6 is expanding slightly into Area 1. And those changes are the same for all of our maps. So the real adjustments that we would want to focus on, the differences between the maps, is really how Area 2 shrinks and how we grow Areas 4 and 7. So on this one, again, it was just a slightly different geographic area we focused on. And we're still in that 2% range for a peak deviation. Then in Plan C, we actually took a slightly different approach. You can see that Areas 7 expanded into Area 2. And then Area 4 expanded into Area 7. And so instead of Area 4 moving north, it moved west. And still we ended up with about a 2.6% peak deviation. And so just a few different geographic options to bring the numbers back into balance. On the next slide, we will show Map D, which again is very similar to Map A. Except we were trying to leave Area 2 a little bit larger, which allowed some of the schools that were in Area 2 to remain in Area 2. So in this one, we just added back the Tahoe Elementary area. And so our peak deviation went up a little bit. It's 3.35% in this plan. And then on the next slide, we'll be able to see how Tahoe Elementary now remains in the yellow area. And then finally, our next slide is Map E. For Map E, we left both Tahoe Elementary and Hiram Johnson High, both in Area 2. And so again, the peak deviation went up again to, now here it's just under 4% at 3.99. Again, still a valid and legal map, it's just a little bit higher of a peak deviation. And so again, on the next slide, when we look at where the schools are located, we'll see both Tahoe Elementary and Hiram Johnson remain in the yellow area, Area 2. And then finally, the next slide isn't the new summary I created. Here we, you can see all the peak deviations all in one page, along with notes about where the changes were taking place. And again, Plans D and E, which were the newest plans, again, just left additional schools, Tahoe Elementary and Hiram Johnson in Area 2. And then none, no changes were made in any of the plans to Area 5. It was well-balanced and it's at the southern end of the district, so it didn't share a boundary with Area 2 that needed to see a reduction. And then the minor changes for Areas 1, 3, and 6 are similar in all the plans. So it's really Areas 2, 4, and 7 that have some geographic adjustments that need to be considered. And in reviewing all of the additional details on ethnicity and race, there's no substantial changes in any of the plans compared to your current boundaries that would cause any concern. And then finally, I think the last slide just reminds us that we need to make a decision by the end of February. And this is just an information item tonight and you are planning to make a decision at your next meeting in February. And with that, if there's any questions, I'm available to help answer.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. We'll go ahead and first ask if there's any public comment. I know we had written comment submitted, but is there any public comment on this item?
Yes, we, we have three public comments. The first is from Samantha Alvarez.
Okay, Ms. Alvarez, go ahead. You have two minutes.
First, I just want to say thank you to all of the board members. I know that you guys are going through a lot of difficulties, especially during a pandemic. But with that being said, thank you all for your hard work. But I was also reviewing the maps that were submitted and I want to firstly just say that I did appreciate the illustrations of the map highlighting the changes specifically to the areas. So thank you for that as well. I was wondering if we would be able to make public more information about the specific maps that were submitted, more demographic wise, for example, the total citizen voting age population or the total population in each one of those areas. And kind of like what you mentioned in the beginning or towards the end about ethnicity as well, if we can maybe make those public so that we can view them a little bit more in detail. Again, I really did appreciate the, the maps and the, the summaries submitted to them, but I really appreciated if that was available to the public as well. I know I had some conversations with some of my neighbors and, and when I mentioned the redistricting process with the SAC unified district, they're like, what? We're doing this? So if maybe there's more information available, maybe we'll have maybe more community members being able to understand a lot of the changes that we'll be going through. And then also I tried to, to get in contact with, to see if I was able to get this information provided through like email, but I wasn't able to get any response as well. So I was wondering if there was a section on the website that I'm able to get that? If, if there isn't, sorry. I just went through like a whole lot of circles and I didn't get any information back to me. So that's why I'm here today. But thank you all again for all your hard work. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alvarez. I think if you just do a search for redistricting maps or trustee maps, they'll, they'll like come up maybe the first or second item on the search. So I've had to go about that way because it's just easier to find the information. And I think there was information in terms of the demographics that was available at, at an earlier time. I don't know if that is part of the public information that's available on the website. Just want to make sure that, to report that the information should, should be readily available. I don't know, Mr. Reynolds, if you wanted to say something, but we have two more public comments in the queue.
Yeah, the, all the demographic details that she is asking about is available on the, should be on the district's website under each of the plans. So we have provided it for the district. I believe that's all been posted.
Yes, it's, it'll give you a more holistic perspective. So, and with that, our next speaker, please, Ms. Moretti.
Yes, our next speaker is Mo Kashmiri.
Okay, Mr. Kashmiri, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Does that go up? Maria said that I also would love to see the demographic data. I have a trouble finding.
Very good. And as we mentioned earlier, it is on the website. So thank you so much for your comments.
Our final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Okay, give me one second to reset my clock. Mr. Gladney, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've heard in previous board meetings, conversation about the desire to include specific schools into specific trustee areas so that we had sort of some spread of Title I schools and specific demographics. But I would challenge that we allow our community, allow our footprint to lie where it is. You know, when, when I heard that comment, I think of, you know, when someone retorts that, you know, I'm not racist, I have black friends, or, you know, I'm not anti, you know, trans or gay because I have a gay friend, or my cousin's cousin is gay. Like the district's demographic and layout and population is what it is. You know, with open enrollment, we have diversity and we have dispersion of students across our entire footprint. So whatever that looks like, if you guys aren't willing to address that, then let it lie where it is. If you guys aren't going to be brave enough to stand up and, and really assess open enrollment and what our school district's demographic enrollment looks like and what the impact on neighborhoods and communities are, you know, with the sun setting and previous implementation of school closures, let it lie where it is. Let's not manipulate what we've created. You know, we continuously try to avoid looking in the mirror and we deflect the reality of today from the decisions that we made in the far or recent past. You know, you know, like I would challenge that if we're going to move certain schools because they have Title I population to another district area that doesn't have that population, we're diluting their power and their advocacy into a district that doesn't represent them. You're moving them for the convenience of adults and boundaries instead of acknowledging the kids in the neighborhoods that they represent. So I would like you guys to, you know, think on that.
Please wrap it up. Thank you. Is that our final comment, Ms. Moretti?
Yes, that was the final comment.
Okay. So now we're going to bring the discussion back to the board, colleagues. If you have any comments, concerns, questions for Mr. Reynolds. You know, we've heard this information item quite a few times. And at the last time, you know, we, we, all the maps were not available for public viewing. So I'm glad that that was available between now and then. So we have more time to, for the public to digest the information and participate in the process. And they can continue to do so until this, you know, until we take action. And that'll be at a subsequent board meeting. So if we have no discussion, we'll go ahead and, Board Member Murawski, go ahead.
Thank you. No, I don't, I don't have a specific comment, you know, on, on which map. I think it's areas that, that I am less familiar with in terms of where the particular boundaries should be, but we do need to take action at the next board meeting on this item. So would just like to, to kind of land somewhere with, with my colleagues here so we can have a plan. So this is the time, if you have the preference to, you know, to talk it, to talk it through while we're all together. Thank you.
Board Member Villa.
Hi, so sorry, I don't have my video working right now. I apologize. I just want to say I appreciate Mr. Gladney's statement. That is a feeling that I have heard from my community members and different individuals that the community lies where it lies and we cannot manipulate the map for the Title I schools. And I know I addressed this in, I think, our December meeting. You know, where your community lives, where your community goes to school is where they live and where they go to school. And that's something that's really important to me, that we're representing the folks that actually live in our neighborhood and making sure that that is, is fair and equal. And, you know, I, it's very, I have a hard time swallowing, moving the map around that it doesn't necessarily represent the folks that we were elected to represent. So I know that's my feeling and I've, you know, I've had it for a while and I've reviewed these maps and I really appreciate the time that folks have taken to give us so many options because I think that's really important that we can see the different ways of the different schools are moving into different districts, primarily just the three. But again, I do, I want to say that I appreciate the statement that Mr. Gladney made. That's exactly the way that I felt and it's great to hear it from other folks in the community.
Thank you, Board Member Villa, Board Member Phillips.
So going back to what Mr. Gladney said, hopefully I understood what he was, what he was saying. He's saying basically, we're not, it's not, it's not to our advantage to move a Title I, or keep a Title I school in a predominantly not Title I area. But our children aren't, they, they're not, they don't, they don't go to their home schools. So it's, it's almost like if, if you have the opportunity, and I know looking at these maps just hurts my head, especially Area 2, but I think I understand when, when we say to, to leave it as it is. Because it's not, I guess it's not, I don't, I don't know. I mean, is there any way that we could look at perhaps the fact that we are an open enrollment district? Because we, I will say, I will put it this way. As a parent who placed her child in this district in a school that was outside of his regular area. In a school that was outside of his um regular area. I did that because I had, I guess, a certain amount of privilege to do that or a lot of really hard work to get him where he was. So. The the school that he is sitting in, if it's not in a, if it's not in his neighborhood, and I maybe I'm just getting this confused. But we don't. And and I know every area is mine. I'm kind of listening back to things that I've heard. All the areas belong to all of the trustees. But I'm thinking about Area Seven and I'm. I'm I'm worried again that we don't have. A balance there in terms of schools. We don't have a middle school. We have a continuation school. We don't have a middle school. We don't have a high school. But um I'm assuming there are other areas that also don't have a high school. Um, but. Maybe maybe we'll take this up at a later time, but a not much later time. I truly am looking at all these maps. And thinking that Map B or Map Map D, I believe, um are suitable. But again, Map D does move Tahoe um out of Area Seven or leaves Tahoe in Area Two. So. And maybe what I'm I'm trying to say is that we need to to look into how our district is operated. And what opportunities there are for our students to go where they want to go. It's possible we have a lot of students sitting in Area Five who want to go to Area Two but can't get there because their parents don't have. What they need um to get them there. I. I don't know, maybe somebody can can help me clarify this. I'm looking at all the maps and my brain is just going. Colors and letters and numbers and inequity. It just doesn't feel like we're balancing it the way we need to. And I know that. When people start talking about the demographics, we're like, we really want to know what is in these areas. Who is who is able to vote, who's more likely to vote, because this comes down to that. Um. But maybe some of my 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 colleagues here can help me kind of parse through. What I'm confused about, which is. The fact that. Well, it's it's just that there's there's. There's inequity. And we're not, we're not helping by doing this. All we're doing, Mr. Reynolds, is balancing the numbers. That's all we're doing, right?
Yes, and it's the way the election laws are written. We need an equal population for each trustee to have equal representation.
But we're never going to get completely equal.
No, we have, so we have to be within that ten percent limit.
Okay, and so if we go all the way up to three point nine nine, I forgot what that was called, that is not a, that's not a good number.
Um, no, there's there's plenty of districts that have much higher numbers because they're much smaller districts. In a district your size, it's a lot easier to have clean lines and smaller deviations.
Okay, has there been any any uh, well, we probably wouldn't be looking at that again. In maybe maybe shrinking some of these areas or separating them into another area? We're only going to stick with seven. We're still sticking with seven.
Right, because there's seven board members.
So the next, when would we actually be able to look into that?
The census comes out every ten years in which we have to consider the total population. Um, how many board members you have is a whole entirely different process.
Oh, Lord, okay. I digress. I will step away from that. But we really need to look at our open enrollment policies and and how they're affecting our students. But this is just for for voting, from what I understand. Somebody will come in and say something, my dear colleagues. So I'm good on that. Not good, but I'm done talking.
Thank you, Board Member Phillips. And I think in some of the um community input sessions, there was. Um, a need to clarify that this was for voting purposes and not for attendance purposes. So there just seemed to be. Uh, some confusion in our community as to why we're going through this process. So um, so it is, it is tricky. Um, and we do have to limit it to the seven um trustee areas because that's just um how many um, you know, trustee areas we have. And it is a completely separate conversation to um talk about maybe adding additional trustees. So. Um, do I have any additional comment, questions from other board members? Okay, um, so with that, um, I just want to thank you for um bringing back more options. Um, for us to consider as a board, um, I, you know, I I go back to my comments that I've made. Um, in earlier meetings that I just think that if we're all going to be with a mindset and um and with a vision and mission. Of um equity and fixing the inequities in our system. And we need to make sure that our trustee areas are not only balanced by population. But they're balanced by type of schools that are within those trustee areas. So I I also stand by my comments about. Ensuring that um that we have a balance um. Uh, you know, that we have diversity in terms of the type of schools that we present from non-Title I to Title I. The vast majority of our district is Title I. We have high poverty, so it's really important for all trustee areas to fully. Understand what that means. And you can't do that if your trustee area doesn't have. Um, doesn't have those schools in um in their respective trustee areas. So. Um, we are an open enrollment district, so our kids can go wherever they want. I have many, um, you know, um. Many families um who go to in my area and go to and their kids go to school in somebody else's area. That's just the way the district is. So um for purposes of establishing. Um, you know, trustee areas, and I think that we can um take a step back. And and really look for um a more balanced approach. So with that, um, we're going to um just. Again, this is an informational item, so we're going to come back next at the next board meeting. And um expect to adopt one of the five plans. So um. So with that, um, thank you so much for everyone's um comments and um questions. Um, appreciate this um discussion and we're going to move on to item eight point five. Um, on the twenty.
Vice President, if I can just interject, I just want to make sure that um if the board uh has any more adjustments. Edits to the maps uh for your own interest or the interest of constituents. Um, that you please let us know, um, because we will be coming back for an action item, as you mentioned, uh Vice President Garcia. On the seventeenth. So any any enhancements to how it's presented? Uh, because we do want to make sure that uh it's as clear as possible to you as our board. As well as to our community members uh who are following this. Uh, I appreciate that Mr. Reynolds has been making those edits to. Try to uh create uh maps that are a little bit easier to follow, um because we're basically overlaying this onto. You know, a map and 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 they they look very complicated. So if there are no other uh requests. Uh, then uh essentially uh you will see the same maps uh two weeks from now.
Thank you so much. Um, and I think now we can um move on to item eight point five. The twenty twenty-two, twenty-three January um Governor's Budget Proposal Update. Um, and this is going to be um Ms. Ramos.
Yes, thank you, Vice President Garcia. Um, as you all may know, a few weeks ago, the governor did release the proposed budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh fiscal year. So what we're presenting to you this evening is just an overview. Of some of those major proposals and how they impact um the district's budget or potentially can impact the district's budget. Um, next slide, please. And for the agenda tonight, um, we're going to have an overview by School Services, Leilani Agnaldo. Who is going to give us a more comprehensive statewide um overview of the proposals. And then we'll go into the impact on the district's budget, going looking at the local control funding formula, enrollment. Uh, average daily attendance and then the uh proposed increased funding for AB six oh two, the special education funding. And then we'll wrap up with some budget concerns and then um some one-time position updates and next steps. Uh, so next slide. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Leilani.
Great, thank you, Rose. Good to see everyone today. Um, so as Rose mentioned, I will be giving an overview of the Governor's State Budget. That he unveiled on January ten, twenty twenty-two. Um, so as we have talked about before in prior budget updates, just as a reminder. This is a only a proposal at this point. It's the first step in what will be a lengthy process this year in twenty twenty-two. Um, as the state negotiates uh the state budget, which will have significant impacts, obviously, for districts like Sac City Unified. And so um at this point, after the governor unveiled his budget proposal, the legislature is now. Hearing all of these proposals and their budget subcommittee hearings, the next milestone will be when the governor then releases his May revision to the state budget. Which will be in May, early May sometime. And then there will be another series of negotiations before the legislature hopefully passes. Uh, a budget that by June fifteen as required by law and hopefully the governor will sign it. Um, by June thirty, um, before the start of the fiscal year. All of that said, another key component of the budget negotiations is what is referred to as trailer bill legislation. And it's the trailer bill legislation that serves as the implementing language. It's implementing statutory changes that will effectuate. All of the proposals and investments that are included in the budget. Um, and as we know all too well, um, sometimes that's delayed. Um, like, for example, last year, there were a number of incarnations of different trailer bill legislation that was implemented. And that came later in in the summer. So, you know, that could very well happen again in twenty twenty-two. So with all of those disclaimers, um, it is the the rebound of the economy is continuing in many ways. Um, while not necessarily in others, but at this. Full of funding for Proposition ninety-eight. Um, it's one hundred and two billion dollars. This is the first time the minimum guarantee under Proposition ninety-eight. Is surpassing the one hundred billion mark. Um, and this is what is projected for twenty-two, twenty-three. As a reminder again. Proposition ninety-eight is the minimum guarantee of um state funding that is provided for K through fourteen. Public education. Of this amount, um, when you adjust for prior year and current year, um, funding levels for Proposition ninety-eight. There is about sixteen point one billion dollars of new revenues that is available. For the governor, for the state to appropriate as part of the Budget Act for twenty-two, twenty-three. And this is a mix of ongoing and one time. Um, that mix of ongoing and one time will be part of the negotiations that happen. Um, in the months to come. And while this is all significant amounts, um, significant dollar figures that we're talking about here. One thing that I want to point out, and this is why I included the chart at the very bottom, is. It's a disproportionate amount of money that is being earmarked for um targeted investments for categoricals, if you will. So you'll see here the estimate, excuse me, the estimate we have of the new funds that are available. About eleven point five billion of it is earmarked for categorical funding with very specific purposes. As opposed to providing it to school districts like Sac City Unified as discretionary funding. So of the new revenues, we're estimating only about four billion dollars that is being committed. Um, as new revenues or new resources available for core funding for districts. Um, and we'll go, we'll see that in the next slide, please. Because our general fund um for districts is really provided to us through the local control funding formula. So the COLA, this is a huge number. Adrian and a few slides will will go through um a reminder of what the. Previous or the previously anticipated COLAs were for twenty-two, twenty-three and the out years. So you'll see what that difference is be- between what was included in the adopted budget that you. Um, that you approved for twenty-one, twenty-two versus this five point three three percent, which is what the governor is forecasting for twenty-two, twenty-three. And this same COLA, this five point three three COLA, um, that same statutory COLA will be applied to other. Categorical programs that typically receive a COLA such as the mandate block grant, special education funding, et cetera. Um, I will also say that this five point three three percent, this is a placeholder for now. There are other economic factors um that are part of the formula for determining what the cost of living adjustment is every year. And so this is just a placeholder. And in fact, the Legislative Analyst Office just recently forecasted that with the additional economic markers. They're actually projecting that the COLA will be higher than six percent when all is said and done. So we will get that updated COLA figure as part of May revision. But at this time, even this five point three three percent is significantly higher than what districts had budgeted. Um, in their adopted budgets for twenty-one, twenty-two. I know that as a district, we've talked a lot about declining enrollment. Um, and you know, uh, earlier tonight, we talked about um our decrease in our. In our average daily attendance and increase in our absence rates because of the pandemic. And this is um something that's being experienced throughout the state. And for that reason, because the LCFF and the general fund dollars that we get locally through the LCFF. Is reliant on average daily attendance figures. Um, the governor has included a proposal to help mitigate what that decline and the ensuing decline in LCFF funding that would go to districts. Under current law, the LCFF factors in the greater of a district's current year or prior year funding. So for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget for Sac City Unified, we would be relying on the greater of our twenty-two, twenty-three. Or twenty-one, twenty-two ADA. Well, because of the impact of declining enrollment and high absenteeism that districts are facing because of the pandemic. The governor has included a proposal that would provide a third option for calculating ADA for LCFF purposes. And that third option would be to utilize a rolling average of the prior three fiscal years, excuse me. A rolling average of the prior three years of ADA. So for, under this proposal, if it was to go through. In our twenty-two, twenty-three budget, we would have the option of using an average of our ADA for nineteen, twenty. Twenty, twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. And because in twenty twenty-one, ADA was not taken and in effect, we had a hold harmless. Then the ADA for nineteen, twenty would serve as a proxy for that year two for twenty twenty-one. And again, Adrian and a few slides, um, will be able to to uh project and provide numbers. For what this translates to for Sac City Unified. One of the things that I should say again, this is just a proposal, right? And other than the COLA that the governor includes as part of his January budget proposal. Um, the advice to districts is to go with current law when you're building your budget. When you, when the district goes to second interim, our advice to districts at School Services is typically to rely on current law. Because all of the proposals that are included in the Governor's January proposal are just proposals, right? As I mentioned, there's a lot of negotiations that are that happen, and so there's a lot of things that could change. And so our advice to districts at this time is to rely on current law for this ADA proposal because a lot could change between now and May. And now and when the budget is um released in June. But that said. You know, absolutely, we recommend that all districts um stay in communications with their county offices of education. Um, because, you know, they're the ones who ultimately have to um have a role, a significant role in in approving your budget budgets that the board adopts. Um, so that said, I've included here at the bottom of the page. Um, a summary of three pieces of legislation that are alternative proposals for calculating um ADA for LCFF purposes. Again, these are also just proposals that have been introduced by various legislators. And so these also have to work their way through the process. So I bring up these alternatives just so you can see. That this will be a process, there will be negotiations that happen between now and June thirty, because any one of these could end up. Um, in the budget, in the in the final budget that's adopted. And there could also be even another proposal that hasn't even surfaced at this time. Um, so just to briefly summarize, AB sixteen oh nine and SB five seven nine, that first bullet at the bottom. That in effect would allow districts to use their nineteen, twenty ADA for one more year. In the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year for your budgets for LCFF purposes. And then AB sixteen oh seven, also by Assemblyman Muratsuchi, provides an alternative for the three-year rolling average. Whereas the governor's proposal relies on the prior three years of ADA. Instead, Assemblyman Muratsuchi's proposal in AB sixteen oh seven would allow districts to calculate a three-year average using the current year. And the prior two years. So just a slight difference there, also with the same idea. Of using a three-year average for calculating ADA. Next slide, please. So that sixteen point one billion that um I talked about earlier, that's available in new revenues um as part of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. I have two slides here that summarize where the governor is proposing to invest those, most of those funds. This is not inten- intended to be an exhaustive list, but rather rather I pulled out the major ongoing investments on this slide. The next slide will be the one-time investments. But here I just really tried to pick out the major ongoing investments that the governor included in his January proposal. So first cut there would be to fund that that five point three three percent COLA, that would be a cost of two point one billion dollars. There's also a price tag associated with the three-year um average for ADA. That he proposed, that would be one point two billion dollars. Um, as you know, starting in twenty-two, twenty-three. There is an expansion of transitional kin- there is an expansion of transitional kindergarten as the state moves to universal transitional kindergarten that is already in statute. That's already something that districts like Sac City are preparing for, starting next school year. And the way the move towards universal transitional kindergarten is working is starting in twenty-two, twenty-three, the birth dates are expanded for, to capture more four-year-olds that are eligible for TK. Under current law, you'll recall that it's our youngest learners that turn five between September and December. They are the ones that are eligible for transitional kindergarten, starting in twenty-two, twenty-three. That's expanded to cover four-year-olds who turn five between September and February. And so the governor is providing additional funding to cover those additional students that will now be part of the TK through twelve system. And so that's what that six hundred and thirty-nine million dollars is for. In addition, starting in twenty-two, twenty-three, there is a new requirement to reduce class size ratios in all TK classrooms. And so that will be a new ratio of twelve to one. That's a requirement that's already in place and will kick in in twenty-two, twenty-three. And the governor is providing funding to help may, bring the, to providing funding to districts for those additional resources that are needed for the staffing. And so this would be funding that is on top of the LCFF dollars that these new TK students would generate. And that amount at the, at the aggregate, it's three hundred and eighty, eighty-three million. But that is projected to generate two thousand eight hundred and thirteen dollars per TK student. So that's twenty-eight thirteen per TK student that Sac City Unified would receive for the, the lower twelve to one ratio. The next program, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. This is a new program that was included in the twenty-one, twenty-two Budget Act. So this is already a program in place, and the governor is all in on this program. You will notice that this is the biggest single investment that the governor has included in his budget proposal to the tune of three point four billion dollars. So this is the program that ramps up requirements for after-school and before-care, after-school care, before-school care, and summer programming as well. And so this is intended to be an expansion of ACIS. I know we have a lot of ACIS programs in our district. So this is an opportunity for us to expand those options for our families and for our students. And he's putting a lot more money into the system for this. Along those lines, the governor is providing more money to sustain the increased ACIS daily rate that districts already are receiving. And then Special Education Funding Formula, this is something our district tracks really closely. The governor is putting even more money into the special education base formula. This would generate an additional eight hundred and twenty dollars per student for our special education program. And then the universal meals requirement that kicks in in twenty-two, twenty-three, there's additional state funding for that. And again, these are the state amounts or the state level amounts, and Adrian and a few slides will, will translate what this means for Sac City Unified for the major proposals. Next slide, please. So the previous slide was ongoing. As I said, these are the big one-time investments that the governor included. Many of these are competitive grant programs. So while if Sac City Unified is interested in pursuing some of these funds, it will be a competitive grant program. So we'll have to wait for the application process and to see how those details play out. And that's true for the inclusive early education expansion, expansion program. That one's a competitive grant. The College and Career Pathways Program, that will be a competitive grant. The Dual Enrollment Expansion, that will be a competitive grant. And then finally, the one point five billion dollars for green buses. That is also going to be a competitive grant. However, the five hundred million dollars that the governor is providing for early literacy, if this proposal goes through, that is something that Sac City Unified can expect to receive funds for. That money will be distributed on an allocation basis. And same with the multilingual school libraries. The way the trailer bill legislation was proposed, Sac City Unified would be able to draw down funds for both the early literacy coaches as well as the multilingual school libraries. There's also money available for kitchen infrastructure upgrades. So that's something that will hopefully benefit Sac City as well if that proposal goes through. And then next slide, I think this is the last slide. I mentioned that in addition to the financial investments that's included as part of the budget proposal, there are, there's a trailer bill legislation, and that's how we got the independent study program requirements that we have today. And so just really summarizing here for us, some of the policy proposals that are included in the trailer bill legislation specific to independent study. At one point, the Department of Finance did signal that they were anticipating extending the requirement for districts to offer independent study. They were signaling that that requirement would be extended into twenty-two, twenty-three. While at this time, the trailer bill does not include that requirement. So I did want to say that. But again, negotiations will continue, so that requirement could resurface, and it could very well be included in twenty-two, twenty-three. We expect that this will be a big part of negotiations. In addition, there is additional flexibility in the independent study statutes to allow for synchronous instruction to count for instructional time. So this would be, for example, time that a student spends on Zoom, zooming into a classroom. There's greater flexibility to allow for that to count for instructional time. And then finally, there's more flexibility for collecting signed independent study agreements to ensure that students are properly enrolled in independent study and generating attendance for the district as well. And with that, I will stay on for questions, but I'll go ahead and turn it over to Adrian now.
All right. Thank you, Leilani. As Leilani stated earlier, I'm gonna go through a couple of slides, going through the COLAs as well as the ADA proposal and then the increased special ed funding. So at this slide, I'm illustrating what our projected COLAs were for the current year all the way through twenty-four, twenty-five. And as you can see, next year, it's five point three three percent. And at first interim, we presented that back in December. We were projecting two point four eight percent. So you can see that that's the largest increase over the next three years. And then the next two years have some slightly small increases of a half a percent or point five percent and point one percent. Next slide, please. And again, this slide is just kind of illustrating the ADA cliff that the governor is trying to address with his proposal of the, the, the third option of using the prior three years of actual ADA. And with that being said, just as a reminder, in nineteen-twenty was the last year that we took ADA for a school year because in twenty-twenty-one, we didn't take the ADA. And then this year, for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're actually doing ADA. And we just filed our first P one report. That was in early January. So we will be, or I was utilizing that data because we, we are talking about ADA yields today or tonight. And for the first attendance report for twenty-one, twenty-two, we're running about ninety, ninety percent. And as Rose stated earlier, where our average has been ninety-four and a half percent in, in pre-pandemic. So that's quite a bit of a drop. And then if we were to use that ADA, you would start to see that funding cliff in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. With that, next slide, please. So this slide gives you an example of the actual ADA for Sac City Unified. And also just kind of the, the verbiage for the governor's proposal that you could use the greater of the following, the actual ADA from twenty-two, twenty-three, or the actual ADA from twenty-one, twenty-two, or average the ADA based on actuals for the nineteen-twenty, twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two years. So with that, you see the actual ADA. And so nineteen-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, it's the same. For the twenty-one, twenty-two year, I'm utilizing the P one numbers as a basis for the actual ADA. And that is generating a little over thirty-four thousand three hundred ADA. And so you can see we're losing about four thousand ADA between twenty-twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. And that's primarily due to the hold harmless. And then moving forward in twenty-two, twenty-three, that ADA is based off the assumptions that using our Cbeds number from the current year, which is roughly a little over thirty-eight thousand students, we would use our pre-pandemic decline of a negative point five percent. And then that ADA yield of ninety-four, it rounds up to ninety-four point six. And with that, we would have a projected ADA of a little under thirty-six thousand ADA. So if you were to, based off the current law, we would be using if for the twenty-two, twenty-three year, the thirty-five thousand nine oh two number. But if we were able to use the governor's proposal and average the three years, that would generate thirty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-one, and that's a difference of a thousand eighty-nine. And based off the LCFF per ADA amount of eleven thousand nine forty-four, that would be a difference of about thirteen million. So Sac City is definitely going to benefit from the averaging for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And as you'll see in subsequent slides, I, I extrapolated that out for the next two years. So that would be twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five. So if we could move to the next slide, we can see those numbers. Next slide, please. Thanks. So moving through the two subsequent years of twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, you see that we are increasing in revenues. I'm highlighting the base amount because that's the amount that we can actually apply to any of our projected deficits. The, the supplemental and concentration amounts have to be budgeted for expenditures. So I'm not, that can't be counted towards the deficit. But as you will see in twenty-two, twenty-three overall, we're projecting an increase in LCFF of twenty point six million. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we're projecting sixteen point three. And then twenty-four, twenty-five, we're projecting twelve point four. And one thing that I will point out in the twenty-one, twenty-two year, you see a negative decline in, a projected negative decline in our enrollment. The reason for that is because me, with me utilizing the P one report ADA data, there's one section of the report that we are able to use the hold harmless, which is ADA generated by our students in our non-public schools and our community day schools. So that is trending a hundred and twenty-one ADA lower than what we had at first interim. So as we get more data, we will incorporate that into the second interim. Because the one piece that I am missing are the, the numbers from our county office of education for the programs that they run that our Sac City students are enrolled in. So when I get that data, that, that will also be incorporated into the second interim. Next slide, please. And so this slide will, is reviewing the special education proposal. Basically, the governor is, as Leilani described, he's proposing five hundred million in Prop ninety-eight general funds to go towards special education. The five point three percent COLA is also applied to the AB six oh two funding. So with these investments, we would see our base rate move up to eight hundred and twenty dollars per ADA, which is roughly a hundred and five dollars more than what the current rate is at seven hundred and fifteen dollars. With that, based off the increase, we would be seeing a projection of increased revenues of roughly four point two million or four point three million in twenty-two, twenty-three, four point two million in twenty-three, twenty-four, and four point one million in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Next slide, please. And so with that, I will turn it over to Rose, and she will go through the impact and what it does to our projected deficits.
Thank you, Adrian. So what you're seeing on this slide is the, the top half of the slide is our first interim multi-year projections that we all presented to you in December. And you'll recall that our deficit at that time in our third year out, which is that green bar there going across, was about twenty-six point two million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, we took that same budget and what Adrian did was updated it with a couple of the major proposals from the governor's items, and that includes the increased COLA, the ADA and the special education funding. And also in here is the update to our P one ADA report that Adrian talked about, where we did see a little bit of a drop in some of those programs. So of course, you know, that we, as Adrian explained, that is additional funding for the district. And so what this means then, of course, is that the deficit will be impacted in some way. And in this case, of course, it's going to be positively. So if I'm going to take you down to that second table there, and we, again, going down to that green bar which shows our deficit, you'll be able to see that in that first year, twenty-one, or current year that we're in, twenty-one, twenty-two, we are increasing the deficit just a little bit projected because of that revenue loss that we're projecting for some of those programs that don't have the hold harmless provision. Not that much, but nonetheless, it's there. However, in twenty-two, twenty-three, that huge COLA kicks in, assuming that COLA is funded, right? It pretty much wipes out the deficit, and we're actually ending that year, I mean, that, yeah, that year projected with a surplus of about one point four million dollars. But then in twenty-three, twenty-four, our deficit creeps back up to eight point seven. Yeah, surely it's not as high as the twenty-six point two that we were projecting at first interim, but nonetheless, that deficit persists because we still haven't been able to manage to control our costs or get our costs to, to match our revenues. Even though we are having a revenue increase, it's not enough to, to keep up with the cost of, 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 of increasing benefits and some other expense categories that we are going to see, we're projecting to see cost increases for. Next slide, please. And we're pretty much getting to the end of the presentation. And so some of the budget concerns we just wanted to bring to your attention is that the revenue forecasts do not include the impact of this new COVID-nineteen variant. We, we're not sure what to expect from that. Of course, you've heard about the reports of high inflation persisting, and what that means is higher costs for the district in terms of doing business. And we continue to experience those global supply chain disruptions. I mean, you've heard Ms. Victoria Flores talk about how we are waiting for our testing kits, and it's because just the, the supply and and then the, the, the delivery dilemmas that we've experienced in, in many of our areas. And then again, the biggest threat to our district is declining enrollment. Although what the governor is proposing is not a hold harmless, it's, it's, it is a soft landing. But one thing to keep in mind, as Adrian explained, is that in the out years, we're assuming that our decline is going to return to the pre-pandemic days of about a half of a percent. And recall that this year, into this year, that we saw a decline of sixteen hundred students versus two hundred that we had been experiencing in the past. We're assuming that's just a one-time, you know, and it's a fluke, it's because of COVID, and that in the coming years, we should expect to see that decline go back to about a two hundred student decline. So we'll have to wait and see if that is, you know, if that does come to pass. And, and we'll be able to tell over the summer and the coming months as students really start to tighten up enrollment for the coming year. And then, of course, collective bargaining is another concern. We, we have agreements that are not settled yet. So not sure what that's going to look like. And then the threat of pers andsters cost increases are always a factor that we must consider. And our health and welfare benefit cost increases is, we had a little bit of a, of a pass this last year as we explained that our carriers, explained to us, Keenan, our broker, that because shelter was in place for the last year, the utilization rate wasn't as high. So we didn't get to experience those high rates. But now, as things are starting to calm down again, people are starting to frequent doctor visits and, and, and take advantage of, of all of those appointments that they didn't get to keep. Their warningness that we should anticipate to see those, those benefit costs increasing in the coming year. And then the bigger one is that, another big one is the universal meals that, that the implementation of that, that, you know, it's going to be a challenge trying to identify those unduplicated student counts. So we're just going to really have to tighten up that whole process, make sure that we're capturing that data because for us, that's going to be a big hit if we, if we're not able to, to identify those students and take advantage of, of that, as those supplemental and concentration dollars. Because we still have to report for those, in order to collect that revenue. So yeah, those are some of the big So yeah, those are some of the bigger budget concerns. And then at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our chief human resource officer, Consey McCarron, who's going to talk about one time positions.
Thank you, Rose. We have a number of one time positions utilized with these funds. And what you can see here. Is an update. We shared an update with you in December. This is an update just a little bit further to show that we have so far. Only been able to fill fifty five percent of the positions that have been identified for use this way. You can see it broken down by bargaining unit. And just to give a couple of examples, we, there was approval for. Eight school nurses. We've been able to fill six. So there's some vacancies.
Consey, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to have to ask for a motion to extend the the board meeting. And I'm asking to extend it to eleven thirty. I'm hoping we'll do our best to end before then, but I need to have a motion in a second.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you. And all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
No.
And and Board Member Phillips is now. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, Consey. Go ahead.
Thank you. No worries. I was saying of the eight school nurses identified, we've been able to fill only six. Of the eight psychologists, only three and a half. And so while we're working to fill positions, we have not been able to fill all of them. As you can see, we are at a fifty five percent rate. From what was authorized to what's currently being utilized. And with that, we'll turn it back to Rose, I think, for a wrap up and questions.
Thank you, Consey. So the next steps are as far as the budget development cycle. As you know, it's it's an ongoing process, but as far as reporting back to formally, we have our second interim report due. And we'll be reporting that back out to you at the March seventeenth board meeting. And then in May, the governor releases his revisions to the budget proposals. And that's what we use to build our budget. Because what happens is, you know, is that the state does not actually enact their budget until June. And by then, we have already shared with you and prepared our budgets. Most likely take an action to adopt it. And so basically, that's it. But between all this time and all this information coming out, we will be keeping you apprised of. Significant changes that are occurring as well as significant changes occurring locally to our district in particular. So yeah, that concludes our report and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, Rose. With that, we're going to bring it back to public comment. Ms. Moretti, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have two. And the first person to comment is Mo Kashmiri.
Okay, Mr. Kashmiri, go ahead.
I just wanted to say grateful to see that the revenues are continuing to increase and they're continuing to show that, you know, that long term. As long as we continue to advocate for more revenue, we've been able to chip away at this, you know, about the deficit. And so I want to encourage this board to put more energy into advocating for new revenue. Like what the governor is proposing so that we can continue to add positions because God knows we need more staff in our schools. As you can see, we can only, we're only hiring fifty five percent of our one time positions. That's ridiculous. That means that, you know, we clearly need to be paying more to recruit and retain and provide a working environment where people feel agency and want to be here. And so we're definitely asking the, we need this district board to invest in their employees and their staff. Because if we don't do that, then our students will suffer.
Thank you, Mr. Kashmiri, for your comments. And and do we have another public speaker?
Yes, our final speaker is Terrence Gladney.
Mr. Gladney, give me a second to reset the clock. There you go. Two minutes.
No, no problem. Going to Consey's statement on only fifty five percent of the allocation regarding staffing. I would love to see the board articulate a plan for the remaining forty five percent where they go unfilled or whatever. The remaining allocation of those dollars are that go uncommitted to the stated purpose. I would love to see a plan B, a plan C, so that we don't again have those dollars roll over to general fund or and or reserve. Our scholars are suffering today. Those dollars are for today and our scholars generated those dollars for this year. So I would love to see a commitment from the board and staff for that purpose. When I think about the current landscape landscape of our community, as I walk around the city, I see like masks right there. They're the new litter. They're the new gum wrappers. They're the new everything. I think that it really is a microcosm of the way our district has historically done business. When I look at. Our small schools and the dollars that we've chased to build those institutions and. Whether or not they should exist as standalone institutions or if they could exist within our comprehensive high schools. I think that is a result of us chasing dollars. When I look at our TK. Projections, I think about when I had a conversation with previous boards and staff about why did we put the first TKs? You know, programs at schools like Didoro Judah when schools like Leotada Floyd serve. Misrepresented and miss, you know, you know, opportunity, basically populations that don't have the the privilege to send their kids to school prior to. Enrolling in our school district. The. Information I received was that there was there was a desire to have those programs be successful. You know, if we're talking about equity, if we're standing on equity. You know, why do we have have ten TK programs and only four of them exist in underserved populations?
Mr. Gladney, can you please wrap up your comment?
I sure will. And and you know, now that the dollars are there. I hope that we prioritize those communities that do not have the privilege and resources to send their students to. Pre K twelve learning opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And he was our final speaker, Ms. Moretti?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we bring back the discussion to the board. This is an informational item, but Board Member Morowski, go ahead.
Thank you. And I always love a presentation by by Ms. Robinson team. It's always clear. It's always. It's not always good news, but in this case, it is good news. So thank you very much. And nice to hear from you, Leilani, as well. So I, you know, I've been I've been reflecting and thinking a lot about, you know, where we are and, you know, what we've done over the last. Three years since since I've been on this board and the the severe fiscal crisis that. We came into in twenty eighteen and the way we've had to manage things. And we are in a different place now. So I think. You know, it's up to us as a board to think about what we need to do differently to reflect the place we're in. Right now and and going forward this year. So. I I have attempted to make, you know, rational decisions on this board and tough decisions that are. Not popular to reduce the number of positions we need to kind of the minimum to meet the student need. Based on formulas. So that is a best practice from a fiscal perspective. And in normal times and long term, it's the right thing to do. We have to keep keep resetting. But I do feel like things are very different this year. And I did hear earlier David Fisher. Said, there's no such thing as an extra teacher. So right now, I I am much more aligned with that idea than than what we've done in the past as a district. And over the past three years. So we're in a very different situation now, different labor market, different fiscal situation, and the the needs of our students are even more dire than they were. Pre pandemic. So I think, you know, it's rational to think differently based on different circumstances. So I do have some thoughts I want to share with you, with my colleagues here and encourage you to think about. Hope, you know, to hear from you about what you, you know, how you feel about this. But I, you know, given that we're in the in the throes of kind of budget development right now in our system. I really think it's it's a good time to have this conversation. So we can, as a board, kind of step forward. Give our superintendent and our staff. Our schools some big picture guidance on what we should do differently this year as we're developing the budget. So I would be interested in hearing back from my fellow board members on your thoughts. But basically, what I'd like to see this year is instead of kind of pewing to the. Formula based staff reductions, I would like to see us err on the side of stability. And holding on to as many of our staff as possible and as we hire more staff, as was discussed. So. I would like the district to come back with a budget proposal that. And I don't want to micromanage this process, but I would like to see some creative solutions to where we could hold on to as many of our employees as humanly possible. To keep, you know, to keep folks in place to serve our students. We don't have enough adults in our system. And we, to me, we need to lean on the relationships that have been built in our school communities and try to seek that stability any way we can. I understand that we, you know, we will have to close some positions. We have to close positions, even if we have to close one here and create a new one. That's just a process we have to go through. So. We understanding that, but I think we should still be able to say, if you are willing to serve your our students. And stay with our district. That we can find a place for you to serve our students in the coming year. So based on student need, we might need to do things a little differently, but. In the past, I think we've had to manage our staffing so tightly that we we put ourselves in a really difficult spot and we have been. Behind the eight ball and trying to hire and staff and make sure, you know, as Rich Vasquez reminds us all the time of, you know. Having a credential teacher in class the first day of school. Now, there's a lot of reasons that go into that and. Nothing is a silver bullet, but I think we need to do whatever we can this year to to make that. Possible for as many students as possible. So we are in a different place. We have federal dollars. As Mr. Gladney mentioned, we have salary savings from. Some of the staff that we haven't been able to hire. So. That's what I would like to see. I mean, if we could just focus on hiring and recruitment and 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 not on, you know, the. Going going through the process of of cuts and losing losing so many staff. If we're a little bit overstuffed. Compared to our formulas in the coming year and we burn through a little bit more of that. Of those federal dollars, I'm not losing sleep over that. That is not. Causing me heartburn for next year. I don't, I don't, wouldn't recommend this kind of strategy on a long term basis. But I think given where we are fiscally with the needs and everything else, that's what I would. What I would like to see. So thanks for the opportunity and thanks for bringing the good news.
Thank you, Board Member Morowski. Board Member Rhodes.
Yes, this was a very pleasurable presentation today, Rose. Really appreciate it. I'm to kind of piggyback off Member Morowski. I'm aligned with Member Morowski and what she was saying. I've kind of been in that frame since. Started the board. I remember last year when we made the cuts, I believe I was the only board member that said we shouldn't vote not to make the cuts. For our staffing. And so I'm aligned with that. But going back to the good news. I'm super excited about the expanded learning opportunity program like that that three point four billion. I come out of the expanded learning space. And so I always think of expanded learning as one of the cornerstones to. What we do here in the district. We heard it from my mother earlier around how expanded learning programs has really changed. The outcomes for her student and really align them with his educational success during the school day. And a great expanded learning program does just that. The spending learning is just not about. Having your kid there and doing sports activities and them a place to be and safe, which it is. But it also can be very powerful to aligning academic successes throughout the school day. And any good expanded learning program works with their schools administrators to do that alignment and provide that extra assistance. And so with this extra help, we can see more of this in our district. I'm also very excited about the special ed funding formula. That's one of our biggest things as in 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 education funding. That is, that always hits us really hard and to see some headway in that as well is very exciting. I'm I'm generally excited. But I like to temper that assignment with knowing that I have to, we have to wait and see when everything comes back. And we won't get those true numbers until after. We accept a budget here, but let the roads get to come back to us. With all the all the all the information and knock on wood, there's some wood right here. That that it comes back airing in our favor, airing in our our staff members' favor, airing in our students and communities' favor. Because that's what it's really all about. So I'll leave it there. Thank you so much. And I defer the rest of the conversation to my colleagues.
Thank you, Board Member Rhodes. Just want to make sure that I. You know, recognize other board members who will have comments, questions. Now, okay, well, I'll go ahead and then chime in. I too want to join my colleagues in changing the conversation about how we plan to meet the needs of our students next year. So we all thought that COVID would be over by now, but the reality is this is the third school year. That we're dealing with with COVID and our students are falling farther and farther behind. There's just too much instability. This last surge continues to remind us that that we're just trying to keep up. We also know that last year we lost sixteen plus hundred students. And that. And we also don't know that these families are coming back to us, to our schools. We know that we have fewer students and that based on the formula means less staff. So that's that's logical. But even though we're serving fewer students this year. And maybe even next year, because that's how we're trending. Our students have greater needs. And so it just makes sense to have a system to budget for a system that is set up to meet the needs of our students. And I feel excited that we can actually do this. We can actually do this by spending our one time funds. That's exactly what they were meant to be spent on, to address the impact of COVID. And here we are. We're seeing it, feeling it. Many of us are parents in this district. We we know what that's like. So we are in a position where we can do this and we should. We also know that next year. Leilani went over these, you know, programs that are going to start next year. Districts are required to ramp up. TK expansion is happening next year here in Sac City Unified, and we're going to get funds for that. That means we also have student growth. We're going to serve more students. Universal meals, districts will be offering, providing two meals per day free to all our students. Somebody needs to make those meals. Somebody needs to serve them. So we're going to need more nutritional staff. Late start times for middle and high schools. That's starting next year. That's going to upend our schedules and that could potentially impact transportation. So we need to figure that out. We may need more school bus drivers. Expanded learning opportunity programs, Leilani touched upon this. These are programs. It's the governor's biggest investment this year, three point four billion dollars of additional ongoing money. To basically stand up before and after school programs and summer enrichment programs. That's supposed to start next year. And then all the grants are available. Community schools. We're in a great position to go after that grant because we already have community schools. The A through G completion. Those are grants that our district is receiving in order to start. Serving more kids and making sure that they not only that they meet A through G. And these are just a few. There are just so many programs that were created and that are being proposed to be funded with this budget. But that will start for sure in this coming year. We also know that our system, because of what we had to do the last few years to just stabilize this, the our our fiscal, you know. Our fiscal situation and also. and also to avoid receivership because we were going to run out of cash. That is a fact. That meant that we had to scale back. And, and we have a very lean operation compared to other districts our size. So I also want us to focus on building a budget for next year that minimizes on layoffs. I know that some positions will have to go away because that's just kind of the nat, the natural course of things from year to year. But avoid layoffs. We may close positions, but avoid laying people off. We need the people in the system for the next year. And also we need to focus on filling vacancies. We know, we just saw that we're, we haven't been able to fill those vacancies as quickly as we, as we want. And we need to focus on hiring more people. And, and I know that we need to hire people at the classroom level, but also in the central office because somebody needs to help implement all these programs that have to be made available at our school sites. So it's going to be hiring from the classroom to the central office. And so I do also want to have a specific ask superintendent that our, our staff does come back with a budget plan that makes all these accommodations. I'd like to understand what the needs are. What is it that our students need? Based on the data that you're seeing, where the needs are the greatest, which school sites? So that we can start thinking about how existing staff in the system can, can start, you know, meeting those needs. We also need to think about how staff may have to be assigned or reassigned to meet the needs because we may have lower enrollment in one site, but we have greater needs in another site. So we just need to figure out how that, what that looks like because it just can't be based on formula so strictly in the sense of the word. Subs. We know that we are, our sub pool needs to grow, but also our, our, you know, we need flexibility with subs. It's, it breaks my heart to think that so many of our schools have a need for subs and they just can't get subs because subs don't want to go there. So we need to correct that. We need to figure out a way to correct for that. And I don't know what we, what we do. I mean, if it's permanent subs at a particular site and then they just stay at that site and they fill in wherever the gaps are. You all, you all are the experts who can figure this out. New hires, the new hires, we need to figure out a timeline that is to the advantage of the district. Our current timeline is so late in the game that we lose out. We're at a disadvantage compared to other districts because we start so late into the, into the year that we're one of the last districts hiring. And by that time, other districts have hired. Everybody around us starts, starts school much earlier in the year. So we need to figure out a way to not be at such a great disadvantage. And then, and then we also need a transition plan. We need our exit plan from using one-time funds in hiring new staff and retaining staff and, and figure out how we're going to move from using one-time funds to using ongoing funds. So, so I, I just, these are the kinds of things that I just kind of would like to see to, to have a bigger picture as to why we're moving in a direction that has been very different in my past three years. And I'm excited to do that because I, because we have this opportunity. But I think we also need to be very informed and responsible in how we move forward. And then lastly, at some point in time, we need to agendize a broader, more in-depth conversation about enrollment and attendance. Because that's basically how we get funded. Our enrollment's going down, our attendance is going down. So we need to have a deeper discussion. We get these monthly reports. I look through them, I see the trends. But I, we, we just need to have that opportunity to have a conversation about context and what this means for us. So with that in mind, if I don't see any other comments, then we're going to bring this discussion to a close. And Superintendent, I'm not sure you have your mic?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so I, I don't know if you want to make comments.
Yeah, just very quickly, thank you, Vice President Garcia. Thank you, Board Members, for your comments and questions and requests. We will, of course, gather around as a team and make sure that we are responsive to the requests that you've made over the course of the next meetings as we start the budget development process. A couple of things that I do want to note, Board Members, is in particular, your commitment as part of the budget adoption in June to adopt the expenditure of one-time funds for the positions that Chief Ramos and Chief McCarron shared with you. Of course, we have access to more specific data points that looks at every job classifications. Where are we? And to the point of one of our public commenters, part of what we are going to be doing is really just looking at what applicant pools look like right now, what pipeline pools look like from our higher ed partners. If we are at 54% of hiring of those positions, which was a significant commitment that you supported us on as part of the budget adoption. We've not hired the 100%, so we know that we have some salary savings for at least half the year. And then, of course, salary savings for the other half that have not been hired. And depending on that assessment, we will make some adjustments and, and come back with some options for the board to consider. What I'm very proud of though, and, and do want to thank the board is that at that time, you understood the amount of work that our team put into that effort identifying the positions that we felt were critical to continue serving our students and our families. And from the very beginning, our commitment was to make sure that, to your point, Vice President Garcia, that we had some support in the central office. But as you see in that data slide, it, it is not a lot of, a lot of positions of that total number of positions. And rather, most of the positions were, are, are really dedicated to providing direct services to our students and to our families. I say that because those are, that was an exception that you made to the board resolutions that you adopted over the course of the last two years, indicating that one-time funds would not be used for ongoing expenditures, indicating that we would strive to have a more healthy reserve as part of our budget structure. But nevertheless, I really see this as an opportunity for us, as your team, to come back with some options that will achieve some of the principles that you've put forward. Vice President Garcia, you also mentioned the piece of the hiring and the timeline. There are some elements, as you know, that we may not be able to, we don't have the flexibility. Some of that is outlined in our collective bargaining agreement. But nevertheless, we will do everything that we can to try to get ahead and stay proactive within the boundaries of that language to try our best to, to hire, just as we've been doing. That has gotten us to that 50% hiring data point that we shared. By no means would I want the board to think that Consey, Chief McCarron and her team have not been doing everything that they can to fill those positions. But we, we do think that that is, that that offers some, some alternative for us to come back with some, some other options for us to pursue and, and, and continue to serve our students now that we can, now that we have access to these one-time funds. The last thing that I'll mention is just keep in mind, these are one-time funds. And what you said to us in June was that you were asking for us to come back with regular reports because we would, of course, not want to have a situation where when those funds expire, that we would have to issue layoff notices to, to these fantastic individuals that would be joining Sac City Unified. So we have an obligation to continue to be creative for the reasons that you mentioned, Member Garcia, in terms of the declining enrollment, how the best practices around staffing and budget, budgeting that FICMAT and other independent entities have called on us to, to, to repair and to fix. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that we will continue to be able to, to bring to you some updates as to how it is that we would continue hiring individuals using one-time funds, but then being able to put ourselves in a position where, where of course those individuals are going to stay here and continue to serve our students and families in Sac City Unified beyond the, 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 the one-time funds that we have access to today.
Thank you, Superintendent. Appreciate the comments and the feedback. And with that, we're going to end discussion. This is a, an informational item. So thank you, Rose and team, for bringing us good news. I feel like it's Christmas in January. And I know it's, it's far from a done deal, but it's, it's definitely looking very positive for education. So thank you. And, and with that, we are going to now go to item nine. And this is under Communications, Employee Organization Reports. Ms. Moretti, do we have SETA?
No, no report.
How about SEIU?
No, no report.
TCS?
No report.
Teamsters?
No report.
UPE?
No report. But we do have one comment from Terrence Gladney.
Okay, Mr. Gladney, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia. I'll try to, I'll try to be brief. I hear a lot in the different spaces that I navigate, whether it's LCAP PAC or AAAB or Bon Overside Committee. There's a lot of reference to negotiation issues. In my work with, like directly with scholars and families, you know, I'm, I'm a firm believer in removing the noes, right? Removing the reasons that people can say, no, we can't do this. You know, I hear a lot from the district about common assessments and the obstacles and walls that it creates and/or the lack of common assessment creates, right? These narratives that are sort of portrayed. So my challenge to all of our labor partners, as well as our board members, is, is that if our board members aren't willing to sort of like traverse the swamps or, or the uncharted territory, because historically, board members don't go into negotiations or superintendents don't go into negotiations, I would challenge that, you know, why do what hasn't been done or what has been done when we continue to get the results that have lasted for generations and don't meet what we expect? So if our board members or superintendent don't typically go into those spaces, be brave enough to go into those spaces. And to our labor partners, you know, if that is the retort that's being portrayed and the narratives is being passed in these spaces by parents and community partners, dispel the myths and put everything out on the table. You know, a long time ago, a district employee told me that the only way to get the district to respond is to shame the district. So to, you know, those that I know in the labor partner environment, shame the district, call their bluff, show your hand and force everybody to the table. Whether you guys need to get students to the table, whatever the case is, we have to do something different to get different results. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney, for your comments. And with that, we will move on to item 9.2, District Advisory Committees. Community Advisory Committee Report?
No, no report.
D-LAC? District English Learners? No. LCAP?
Yes, we have Gwene Bird.
Thank you, Mrs. Bird. I will, oh, do we, do we limit the time to two minutes as well?
I don't need more than two minutes.
Okay, okay. That you make it easy. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Aguilar. I'm Gwene Bird, parent of two teens in, in the district and LCAP member from District One. I'm in my second year of serving on the LCAP PAC and I'm the designated speaker tonight. So I want to give you just a quick status report of what we're up to. First, let me say I'm impressed with the dedication of the members of this group to dig deep into the issues facing the district. It's a really good group of people to work with. And a quick shout out to our staff liaison, Steven Ramirez-Fong, who keeps us on track and is a really good listener. He synthesizes our diverse opinions and input he hears into a coherent summary document. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the hardworking district staff who have stayed after hours to come to our meetings and give us presentations in the last few months. We've learned a lot about the daily responsibilities and challenges that the district faces. Since you last heard from us, we've been working hard to distill the massive amounts of research and information we've received to be able to make clear and specific recommendations to the board. We will officially make those recommendations at the March board meeting. We recognize that the board is flooded with information from so many legitimate and valuable sources. So our goal is to synthesize and compile information and then prioritize those issues for you so you can focus on a few key issues. As much as we would like our district to be able to do everything, our goal is to narrow down our discussions and make recommendations on the most critical issues. In meeting this month, we worked on identifying some key categories of issues to be addressed. While this is still a work in progress, I can share that so far, the key topics include addressing learning loss, mental health and social emotional learning, MTSS implementation, consistency in district programs across all schools, staff recruitment and retention, special education and early education. I think I can safely say that the teacher and staff shortage really rose to the top of the list of priorities. Without teachers in every classroom, nothing else can be accomplished. Crucial to this point is the continued lack of collaboration or agreement between the teachers' union and the district. All of us on the PAC are concerned about this antagonistic relationship and how it's affecting our students and the long-term health of the district. So I'm calling this sort of a teaser for things to come, but know that your appointed PAC members are taking seriously a responsibility to educate themselves and come to you with cogent recommendations that we think will guide the district towards a path of excellence for our students. Thank you for your time and for your dedication to our kids.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your dedication on the board. And Ms. Moretti, Student Advisory Council? Oh, we have one more LCAP, LCAP PAC member? Ms. Rodriguez?
No, I'm not here for the LCAP. I wanted to make a comment on this section later. Sorry.
Okay, okay. So let me go to Student Advisory Council first.
For Student Advisory Council, this month for both our college prep and SACET initiative, we are finally starting our survey process. We'll be collecting student voice this month and work on the analysis of these data. And using the analysis, we will then work on our initiative and eventually present to the board. And I would also like to highlight our monthly newsletter. We work on writing articles that are relevant to the month. And for February's issue, we included topics like Lunar New Year and Black History Month. So do keep an eye out for that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then we have the African-American Advisory Board?
No, no report.
Okay, so any other public comment?
Yes, Maria Rodriguez. Am I, am I?
Go ahead.
I'm not. So thank you, Board, for this time. I wanted to say that it's this agenda item, which is to blame for me to continuing to come to these meetings because when I was part of PTA Council many years ago, I substituted and came to a board meeting to give an update and it really engaged me and felt like I could make a difference. And so I was in there around the time, same time as Terrence Gladney, Frank DeYoung, even President Pritchett and Rich Vasquez. And I give a lot of credit to the FACE Department, the Family and Community Engagement. And I noticed that on their webpage, they say parent engagement equals student achievement. And I'm going to bring this up now to try to explain to you what I think Terrence Gladney was saying during the redistricting point that I'm not sure you all got. And in my opinion, the greatest disservice to equity in our school district is open enrollment, where families who have the privilege are allowed to go to other schools, leaving other schools to just decline. And I think what he was saying was it's fine to redistrict, but you're not addressing the critical problem, which is these schools. I was the, I had the oldest child with all my friends. I was the first one to pick a kindergarten and I did not pick my home school and I regret that. All of my friends followed me to this other school that we were able to get into. By the end of my, I became very engaged. We all became very engaged. We developed that community. But I feel bad that I pulled my resources away from my neighborhood school. And that's what he's talking about. These are the schools that are closed. We, we can address redistricting, but we're not changing the critical problem that continues to do this. By the time my kid was a sixth grader, I decided I was going to take him to my neighborhood middle school and my neighborhood high school. None of my friends. None of my friends followed. Like, and I think they all thought I was crazy, but I was committed to the neighborhood schools. Anyway, I just needed to say that. I needed to thank the people that have always engaged me and brought me to this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for your comments. And with that, we're going to move on to. Do we have another one?
Terrence Gladney has raised his hand.
Okay, Mr. Gladney, go ahead. You got two minutes?
I just hope that you guys acknowledge Maria's expertise and experience as a treasurer and as a finance aficionado. She was the best treasurer I ever could have hoped for as a Sac Council PTA president. I'm not going to mention her kids directly by name, but BNC, I hope that they're doing well. You know, when you talk about connecting the decisions that you make directly to student impacts, you know, students have names, you know? Like when I think about all of the students, a shout out to Board Member Zhang, you know, you're a senior student with my daughter at Kennedy. You know, when we talk about students, they have names. They're not just numbers. They're not just data. You know, build relationships with these scholars, with these future leaders. Like, they're not just decisions or votes. They're not just numbers. When you guys acknowledge Board Member Zhang, it's not an afterthought, except that it's actually an afterthought. You guys forget about her presence, but her presence is actually the presence that will keep you guys grounded and attached to a moral compass that reminds you that you are here to do the work of students. You know, like, students first and kids first is not just, it's not just a statement. It's something that you stand on. That's why I've been coming to these board members, even when scholars that I know have been dis-served and disenfranchised by the decisions from the same dice that you guys stand behind. Stand on something. You know, stand on Board Member Zhang. Stand on her shoulders. If you ever have a question about the decisions that you make, look to her because her words ring true through and through and they will last beyond you guys' terms. When she goes on to do great things, you guys will try to claim attachment to her greatness. But think about whether your actions actually align with what she stood for and what she spoke.
Mr. Gladney, please wrap it up. Okay, thank you so much for your comments. And Ms. Moretti, was he our final speaker on 9.2?
Yes, that was the final speaker.
Okay, so now moving on to item 9.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Vice President Garcia. I know it's late hour. I'll be as brief as I can here. I do want to just mention a couple of things. Of course, as you heard this evening from our staff, and thank you for their work in preparing the presentations this evening. Of course, the health needs of our students continue to be critical for us to be able to keep our schools open. This week, we are finalizing the distribution of KN95 and KF94 masks for students. We'd already distributed them to our staff as well. We've offered five masks to every one of our students in our district. That was a very, very big undertaking and involved staff from distribution services, school administrators, office managers, site leaders, teachers, campus monitors. And I just really want to take a moment and thank them because we have a lot of staff members that are working late into the evening, very early morning hours, transporting boxes and boxes of PPE. The masks that we handed out to our students, we believe will not only create safer classrooms, safer learning environments, but also create access to the best PPE mask for our students when they're in a high-risk public setting, hopefully away from school, and they'll continue to use them outside of the school setting. As you know, board members, and to our community, COVID and this Omicron surge consumed much of our work that we did in January. But that was not the extent of the important work we conducted that month to address the well-being of our students, families, and staff members. Our district has a very diverse and committed leadership team who are working hard to pierce through the inequities and improve the social justice and advance a social justice agenda so that everyone feels included and equally supported. Yet, as we all know, we have had well-publicized incidents of racism and they indicate that we still have a lot of work to do. I wanted to just mention, as you know, that we believe that we've taken a very proactive step by engaging a longtime Sacramento community member and lawyer with extensive expertise in social justice and civil rights matters. Mark T. Harris is an attorney who will continue to provide an impartial review of our ongoing independent investigations that we've initiated to ensure that the process is credible, it's thorough, it's swift, and it's, of course, very objective. Our goal is to continue to interrupt racism and it's going to take a collective effort from each of our classrooms down to our boardroom or from our boardroom to our classroom, as we tend to say here in SAC City Unified. One important step in that journey is the anti-racism training that our district has mandated for all staff and for our district leaders. As you know, the training is provided, was provided to all of our teachers as part of their professional development at the start of the school year. Our community demanded that we move away from making these types of professional learning opportunities optional. And of course, we made it mandatory. Our school site leaders, our district leadership team have participated in the same training. And I want to applaud and take a moment just to recognize you as our board members for having begun this important professional learning last month and continuing with two additional sessions over the next weeks. This is taking place on weekdays, as you know, from 5:00 to 9:00 o'clock in the evening. And I know that that just takes a lot of time and energy and I want to acknowledge your work as a board. Continuing on the subject of inclusion, diversity outreach this month, we've been strengthening our partnerships with organizations that can help us connect with families and students that have been hardest to reach outside of our school buildings. Ms. Flores is engaged with partners, community-based partners, UC Davis, to try to figure out how to increase vaccination rates among our African-American students in our hardest-hit areas throughout SAC City. We also this week have begun working with the Mexican Consul, Liliana Ferrer, who has also offered to support our efforts to continue seeing vaccination rates go up. And on that, on a related front, I did make a commitment to encourage our community to look into an annual effort that the Mexican consulate has sponsored called Steps to College Fair, which is going to be held this Saturday, February 3rd. It's the largest college fair in Northern California to connect all students with college representatives with special attention to those students who come from multilingual families. At that fair, students will learn about their finance options for higher education, which of course is so important to promote due to the March 2nd deadline to apply for financial aid as well as the California Dream Act. Finally, board members, I'd like to highlight a new effort led by Chief McCarron and her team in the HR department, celebrating staff who have gone above and beyond to serve our students in such difficult circumstances that we're calling our Employee Spotlight Program. Last month, we had over 67 nominations that were made in a 10-day submission period. 12 individuals in our elementary segment, eight in our middle school segment, 12 in our high school segment, and 26 outside of our schools in other departments. Our nominations included individuals who are on a regular basis stepping up and showing up for our students. They included employees with perfect attendance, those leading our COVID-19 efforts, both at vaccination clinics, testing sites, as well as employees who continue to go above and beyond to serve our students and families. I want to thank Chief McCarron and her entire HR staff for their work and energy in this employee recognition effort. We'll continue to bring these positive efforts to highlight the great work and dedication of so many SAC City Unified staff members. Everyone can continue to nominate other employees through this program. We have a nomination form, which is on our website. They're due by February 17th. So please visit the website and submit a nomination for an employee that is going above and beyond. Again, thank you to those that were nominated, to those that are continuing to do the work and will likely be nominated, and really to everyone in SAC City Unified. Thank you for your service to our students and to our families.
Thank you, Superintendent. That's great to hear that despite the busy and chaotic times that we're taking the time to acknowledge and recognize so many employees who are going above and beyond. And I'm sure there are many, many more beyond those that are nominated. So now we're going to move on to.
Excuse me, Vice President Garcia. We have a public comment from Terrence Gladney on the side.
Okay, thank you. And give me a second, Mr. Gladney. I'm going to set the timer for two minutes. Go ahead.
Sorry, I had to turn my fan on because I don't like the smell of smoke. So, you know, there's smoke being blown around, so I had to clear the air. You know, when you guys talk about employee spotlight, it's interesting that you can't even spell the name of people that you're highlighting. Like, I'm huge on names. There's an administrator, Corey, we call him CJ. He did a whole presentation on names and how we receive them and where they come from and how important they are, right? Receive them first from our parents. You know, my name is Terrence with two Rs and three Es. It's often spelled with an A and two Es, one R, right? So I'm huge on names and how we acknowledge people and acknowledge the names that they're given. So how important are these staff members, these teachers, if you can't take the time to acknowledge their given name or the name that they choose to be given or the name that they choose to be acknowledged by? So, you know, all this sounds great. It's a lot of words. It reminds me of a word search. We're trying to find the meaningful words in a sea of letters. But it's hard for me to accept that. You know, a lot of times you guys have the final say. You're in an actual privileged position to have the final say on a lot of these agenda items. So a lot of times, you guys' final statements go unchallenged. But just step back and really think about, do you reflect? What's up, Board Member Wu? I hope I'm not disturbing your, you know, your Sean. But, you know, think about, you know, are these final statements that you have really reflective of the words that are spoken prior to your final statement? It's easy to have the last word, but it's a lot more difficult and it's a lot more honest to step back and say, you know what? Did I say anything that made sense? Anything that really is going to resonate? I really don't have anything more to say because I don't want to waste my words on a, you know, unattentive audience. I'd rather waste my words or spend my words on my scholars. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney, for your comments. And do we have any other speakers, Ms. Moretti?
No.
Okay, now we're moving on to item 9.5, Student Member Report.
I would just use this time to briefly bring up an idea. I recall Member Garcia mentioned the sort of buddy system of student board members, where two student board members work together. So there's always one member that knows exactly what their role is. I think that this allows for smoother transition between student board members. And I think it'd be a great idea to implement this in our district because it's really hard to start fresh in a new school year, especially in the start of the school year where there are many new policies that should be implemented. I've yet to work out the details with the Student Advisory Council, but I hope the board is open to this idea and we can discuss further in the future.
Thank you so much, friend. We look forward to hearing the recommendation from the Student Advisory Council. I did skip over the President's Report, but she is not here. So we're going to go ahead and officially skip over that. Now we're going to move on to item 9.6. It's information sharing by board members. Colleagues, I don't know if you want to share information. If you do, please go ahead and raise your hand. I don't see any information, you know, wanting to be shared by our colleagues. So we're going to move on to item number 10, the Consent Agenda. This is an action item, so I will need, first, I will need to check if there is public comment on the consent agenda.
No, there's no public comment on consent.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moretti. So we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion in a second to adopt the consent agenda.
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Oh, and that is a roll call vote. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Yes, Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rose?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
Aye.
Thank you, Superintendent. Now we're moving on to item 11.0. This is Business and Financial Information and Reports. This is to acknowledge that we have received, oops, Anne is flagging me, so what am I not doing?
Did we get a student preferential vote on the?
Oh, goodness. Sorry, Board Member, I skipped over my notes.
Yes, on all open session items.
Oh, thank you. Okay, and now we're going to, now we go to German. Is that correct, Anne? I don't see you.
Yes, you have Business and Financial.
Okay.
And then adjournment, yes.
Okay, okay. So going back to Business and Financial Reports, so that information, it's to receive information. So we just, what, acknowledge that we've received the information? Now moving on to 12.0, Future Board Meetings and Dates and Locations. So we're meeting on February 17th. That's our next board meeting. And also, the follow-up board meeting is on March 13th. So now we are going to, you know, adjourn. We have, we are going to adjourn in memory of two employees. Superintendent, are you doing this or am I going to share the info?
Sorry, Member Garcia, I'd be happy to do it. Board members and our community, this evening, we would like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Mr. Gary Oshida and Ms. Marvella Payne, who recently passed away and wanted to thank and honor them for their service to our schools and to our students here in SAC City Unified. Mr. Gary Oshida worked, take off my mask, sorry. Mr. Gary Oshida worked as a refrigeration mechanic and also repaired cafeteria equipment in our Nutrition Services Department. I had the pleasure of talking to his spouse earlier this week. He was a colleague in Nutrition Services, but more importantly, a friend to everyone that he met. He was skilled in his trade as a licensed contractor and a journeyman. He was trained by his dad, actually, as a teenager and continued to use many of his father's tools every day here in SAC City Unified. Our team has told me, and I saw some pictures, that he was funny and charismatic and he could figure out how to fix any piece of cooking or refrigeration equipment. He was resourceful, so much so that he would save old equipment parts and could never throw away anything what others would have considered junk. Gary considered it a treasure. We honor Gary for his commitment to excellence and dedication to the Nutrition Services Department, and he will be missed by all. Also, this evening, I had the opportunity to visit Tahoe Elementary recently. And we had also the passing of Ms. Marvella Payne, a Food Services Assistant in the Nutrition Services Department. She too, I had the opportunity to talk to the family and just wanted to mention that Ms. Marvella Payne passed away in her sleep next to her husband of 30 years earlier in January. And her family described Marvella as the most caring and unselfish person you'd ever come across. She was so happy and joyful that very few ever saw her upset. Her kindness will be sorely missed, of course, by our Tahoe Elementary families, but also just by our entire district, the SAC City Unified community.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. It's just, this is a great opportunity to honor those employees who are part of the SAC City Unified family and who have passed on. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn in a second.
Don't move.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.